Buddy, and welcome to the planning board meeting of September 25th, 2019. Pretty full agenda. We're in the town hall, we're on the third floor. We'll start it off with, oh, we might as well start it off with the minutes. Can I hear a motion to? Well, you have it right in front of you.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from September 11th, 2019.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion made by Bruce, seconded by Joanne to accept the minutes for September 11th, 2019. Edits, comments?
No, they're really good. Brief, but good.
Okay. Good. Joanne, you all right with it?
I'm good.
All in favor of approving the minutes, September 11th, 2019? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No opposed. Motion carries, four zero. Great. Start with the vouchers.
Do you want to do them separately or together?
Well, John, help me out here. First one for the, can we just handle that? That's part of something, but can we handle that? Because that's being chion as a voucher. Do you want to just deal with that now as under the vouchers?
The Stone Road, we can do with that. We can deal with that later.
You can deal with it later?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we deal with number two and number three? If I can have a motion for those.
I make a motion to pay Staples office supplies eighty-four dollars and thirty-four cents, and then Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, the M-I-M-A-P, for year 2020, two thousand dollars.
Okay, motion to approve, motion to approve, is there a second for that?
Second.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Tilly. Motion's been made to, is there any discussion about the office supplies? The office supplies are pretty straightforward.
I think, remember, we had a bill, Merrimack Valley, after they messed up the M-I-M-A-P. Did they check to see if we paid?
How about the office supplies? Everybody good with the office supplies?
Yeah.
We're all good with that? And as far as my map is concerned, well, good, bad, or indifferent, you have to pay the bills, right? Any discussion about it? All in favor of approving the Merrimack Valley Planning Authority for 2000? And office staple supplies for 162? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Well, Staples was, oh, those two, sorry, eighty-four and then seventy-five, sorry. I didn't make my proper motion. Yes.
Did I mess up?
I messed up.
Okay. Did I clear it up when I repeated it?
You did, yeah.
Okay. Got lucky there. Got lucky. Even a broken clock's right twice a day, right? And we'll hold on to that one. And those two will go around. We'll save that for later on this evening. Or do we want to deal with that right now, John?
The Stone Road? Yeah, let's, it's under business, but we'll get them out of here right now while we're, while we're in voucher mode.
Here, look at your handout here. I think this is a brand-new handout that John just gave us.
I can summarize it for everybody if you'd like.
Would you mind, John?
No problem.
Thank you so much.
So this has been a long time in the making, signing off completely on this particular subdivision, and it's a, really a driveway extension, Stone Road Lane. And Dave Vager, our site inspection engineer, he has finally signed off on the as-built plans and the remaining outstanding landscaping items. So the action I'm recommending for the board to take this evening is in the bottom of page one, and that is a motion to release the remaining escrow closure deposit in the amount of eighty-one hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents, and that's for Stone Road subdivision.
It's fair.
So is everybody clear on this? Three lot subdivision done a while ago, accepted by the town, finalized, all set?
Just closing it all out.
Just returning residual money.
Yeah.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Somebody want to make a motion for that for me?
I make a motion to, for the board to release the Stone Road subdivision remaining escrow closure deposit in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and ten cents.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Bruce. Discussion, just a quick question. When, when it's at the end of the month, and you get a number, and then we post it?
Yeah, whatever the total sum is.
Total sum with, with any remaining interest?
Yeah.
Should I?
Yeah. Do you want to modify that?
Yeah. I move for the board to release the Stone Road subdivision remaining escrow closure deposit in the closing amount at the end of September 2019.
Second that.
It would be roughly eighty-one hundred fifty dollars, roughly.
Well, eighty-one, thirty-four, ten, plus any interest remaining. That work?
Yep.
Is there a second for that?
Second that.
Made by Joanne, seconded by Bruce. Discussion? Good with that, Tony?
Yes, fine.
Everybody good with it?
About time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And we can take care of that right there. Great. Thank you. That's done, right?
Yeah.
Good. Went off the, check that one off the list. Great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you would, okay.
I'm fine.
We do have an, an extension request.
Extension request.
For 554 North Street.
Mm-hmm.
And in the staff report, it explained what the situation is. The applicant is trying to work with the Butters to come up with an agreement, and...
John, are you saying we should open this one first?
Yeah, we, we should, but I'm just giving you what's going on, so, yeah, correct.
So what you're, what John's asking is to take these a little bit out of order.
If, if the board wants to.
If you guys don't mind. Everybody good with taking them a little out of order?
Yes.
Okay, so let's start with 554 North Street. Maybe we can open the public hearing for 554 North Street. Somebody have a motion for that?
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for 554 North Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded by Tilly. Have to be a little quicker, Joe. Have to be a little quicker, Tilly, be, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The, the, the public hearing for 554 North Street is hereby opened. Do we have an applicant? Nobody's here? No representatives?
They, they, they did say they would try to be here, but...
Okay.
The whole, the whole idea is, is there anybody here for this application?
Yeah, is any, are there any Butters to 554 North Street here?
No.
Okay, because if there are, I mean, you, you have the right to speak. Okay. That being done, we ask the public.
Yeah.
Public's not here. Applicant's not here. Basically, they're looking for an extension, John?
Yeah, and the, the extension is to work on the revised plans, and they've been in real close contact with all the Butters, you know, trying to work out an amenable plan to go forward with. And the applicant did ask for the October 9th meeting.
How does that look?
Well, it's, it's busy, and it's probably going to include another item than what's on there now. And I'm also looking at the reality is that the plans, even though they're done, they're not going to have any type of peer review finished. So, you know, I'd like to be able to accommodate them for the 9th, but in reality, the second meeting in October, you know, is...
I really wish the applicant was here, because out of, out of everything that's before us right now, if I had to point at one quarter-lane subdivision request that's, that's before us, I would think that that lot just, it's, it's proximity to the existing Driftway Farm, and its size, I would think that that would be a poster child for open space residential design. And I would love to speak with the, with the applicant, just to feel them out, whether they would feel comfortable about withdrawing, and possibly submitting their application as an OSRD application, which would give us just so much more flexibility.
Yeah.
Is there any way you can convey that?
Yes.
To them, John?
Absolutely.
And we're, in the interest of that, it sounds like they're redrawing plans?
Yeah.
So they'll either choose not to, or they'll need to redraw plans, and they'd need to submit an application. So if they were to submit an application, I would think that what they would have to do is, they'd need a little bit of lead time?
Yeah.
So that the new public hearing could be advertised for a special permit. What's your lead time on something like that? What is that, about a month?
Well, if they were to do what you're asking, to pay the message to them, the earliest we'd be able to schedule it, in reality, would be the first meeting in December.
In December?
Wow.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, they'd, they'd have to redo the plans.
Right.
You know, reconfigure everything. What they are planning to do at this point in time is to donate the rear four acres of the property to the Greenway Association, so...
Essex County Green Belt?
Yeah.
And that's fine. It's just I think OSID would let them have a much better designed subdivision. Interesting.
No, that's true. I mean, we, we were able to do that with Parish Road.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. Much, much better for everybody, for the neighbors, for everyone.
Well, you can always suggest it.
Right.
Absolutely, absolutely. So let's look at, what's the second meeting in October, John?
It is the 26th.
Twenty-third?
Is it the 26th?
Twenty-third, twenty-sixth?
Let me look at my calendar here, real quick.
Twenty-third?
Yeah.
Why doesn't everybody feel that the 23rd is in a...
December?
October.
No, October. October, and, you know, John can talk to them, and, you know, we could always postpone for the...
They change.
Extend it out again.
There's a mission.
Ideally, to do a swap like that, I guess you just keep the existing, and advertise the new, and then hold the existing five minutes before the other one?
Yeah.
And they could officially withdraw, and we could vote to allow them to withdraw, and that would close that hearing out, and then we could open the new hearing.
Okay.
If they so choose.
Now, if we want to take a consideration, another wrench, if we postponed our two ordinances that we want to work on until the second meeting in October, then we would be able to fit them back in here for the first meeting in October, just to discuss this issue, which I think it would help, you know, their timeframe, trying to...
Second meeting in October? Everybody good for the second meeting in October?
Do you have a signature for the extension, the formage?
Yeah, yeah. Through December.
They're good through December, all right. Someone want to make a motion to continue the public hearing for 554 North to October 23rd?
I make a motion to postpone...
Continue the hearing.
Sorry, continue the hearing for 554 North Street until October 23rd meeting.
Is there a second for that?
Okay.
Motion's made by Joanne to extend the 554 North hearing to October 23rd, seconded by Tilly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. That is currently a special permit, and we did not take any new information. So Bob's absence, he's still allowed to vote on that if he does the, his due diligence, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Let that, let the record show that. Okay, good. Let's go to, might as well go to 5565 Central Street. And site plan to convert offices to residential apartment buildings. Can I have a motion to open the continuation for 5565 Central? Motion's been made to open. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Hearing for 5565 Central Street is now open. Oh, we have the applicants before us. Would you, would you kindly introduce yourself for the record?
Sure. Brian Fogg from Eric O'Connell.
Hi, Brian.
Mark Dianowitz from J.D. LaGrasse Associates.
Just to summarize, John, do you want to bring us up to speed where we are here?
Okay. One of the handouts this evening, in front of you, is an update from the previous staff report that was sent out in the, you know, on Thursday.
That look like this?
Yes, yeah. And this brief staff report includes just one page, and what it does is explain the newest rendition of condition number 12, which is found on page four. And I want to take a moment to read through it. The deleted language is proposed in strike-through, and the added language is in bold print.
I don't see any strike-through. I see a clean copy here.
Yeah, that's in, there's no strikes.
I see clean copy.
No, 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 right here in the front.
Oh, oh, there.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, how it's been changed.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So the clean copy that's attached to this?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. That deletes conditions number four and six that were deemed by this board at the last meeting needless to be included with the decision.
And it deleted nine and 10? Nine and 10 is missing on page four.
Let's see here. Okay, so 11 and 12 become nine and 10. You are the best at catching stuff, Harry. Don't let anybody kid you.
I'm going to become a professional proofreader someday, when I grow up.
But in any event, so 11 and 12 now are nine and 10, with 10 being former 12.
So the front is now 10.
Yeah. And the language in the clean copy does read exactly as is proposed in the front page of the staff report. So the added language, approximately 785 square feet of existing open area located in the site's northwest corner near the public safety building. That's the new language. And the, you want me to read the condition in its entirety?
No, no, not, not necessary.
This 12 is 11, not 10, is it? We've got nine, 10.
The public safety deemed acceptable to the fire department and town council.
Right.
Yeah. Since we're going to be changing the numbers anyway?
Yeah, that's right.
Would it be possible to also not change that section, but to jump to page six?
Mm-hmm.
And under the heading where it says on page six, prior to issuance and verification of the certificate of occupancy, just to add a number four?
Okay.
Which would essentially be a notation, which would say, please, please note what will be special conditions number nine and 10, right?
Mm-hmm.
The new nine and 10? Just so, anybody pulling this open, ready to sign off on our occupancy permit? We'll read that directly. They'll flip forward to it, they'll see it, it's in there, it's in, it's in.
Yeah. On page four.
Under special conditions. Anybody else see anything?
Where is the affordable housing? I thought that was supposed to be done before occupancy.
That is.
It's supposed to have that in there.
That's number 10, right?
That, that would be number nine now.
Number nine.
On page four.
Okay.
Number nine.
A lot of wording here.
Oh, yeah.
So many words, so many words.
Fewer than before.
Yeah, they're just...
I like to save all the words when we can. Is...
So if I could, Mr. Chairman, so during the course of the evening, before we adjourn, I'll make these changes, and we can look through it one more time at the end of the meeting and endorse that along with the site plans. And then, you know, tomorrow you can...
Do we have my, uh, site plans? We have mileage?
Yeah.
And those are, those are referenced in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. With all the dates.
Perfect. Dates and rev dates are all set.
Yeah.
Is, is there anyone in the audience, this is the last time you'll have an opportunity to speak publicly about CBS Plaza? Anyone at all? Going once, twice? Public is satisfied? I'm satisfied?
Okay.
Tilly, you satisfied?
Absolutely.
Bruce? Yep? We good? I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing for 5565 Central Street.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for 5565 Central Street.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Hearing's closed. We're in public session, just business session right now. Are we going to, does anybody want to make a motion to issue this decision?
I make a motion.
With the changes that have been made this evening?
I will make a motion to accept the 5565 Central Street proposed amendment language for certification of approval conditions with the noted revisions that need to be made.
Special permit.
I move to approve the 5565 Central Street special permit site plan certificate of approval as written...
And amended.
And amended, dated September 25th, 2019, and attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, wow, that one was too tough to call. I'm going to, I'm going to give it to Bruce.
All right.
Motion was made by Joanne, seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. John, when you get that done?
Yeah.
At some point?
Yeah.
We'll sign it tonight?
Yeah. We take a break.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for making a nice project, and it's going to be a great place for seven people to live, seven families, seven couples, families, whatever.
554 North Street just came in.
Good night.
Oh.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure, absolutely. We opened and continued that.
Yeah.
Just briefly, could we just reiterate? Because 554 North...
Just walked in.
Just came in. I don't know how we do this. No, no, we can't talk to them. No, no, can't do it. Anybody that was here for that would have left. No. Nope. Poison's the apple. Poison's the well. Nope.
I'll convey...
Nope, poison's the well.
...motion tomorrow.
Nope, 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 poison's the well. Sorry.
Explain it to the applicants, I mean, to the audience.
The hearing's been continued. Anybody that would have been in the audience specifically for that might have left, and now we can't reopen it, we can't touch that. If John can express everything that we discussed...
Yeah. It was closed, you mean?
It was continued.
This?
No, no, 554 North.
Oh, okay.
Was, was continued.
Yeah.
Okay, you good?
Get to you tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, sorry about that. Missed it by two minutes.
I'm sorry, thank you.
We shouldn't have taken it so quickly. It was a shame we did.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay, so the only one left right now on the agenda is, we took care of 196 West Main Street. Can I have a, a motion to open the continuation for 196 West Main Street?
I make a motion to open the continuation for 196 West Main Street subdivision, special permit.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by, by Bruce, to open 169 West Main Street, two lot, definitive subdivision, special permit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Hi, gentlemen, will you introduce yourself for the record, please?
My name is James Ogden, I'm here for the applicant.
My name's William Holt, I'm here representing design, engineer, and surveyor.
Great. Oh, bring us up to speed, gentlemen. Bring us up to speed, please.
Okay. Can I interject real quick?
Absolutely.
Part of the handouts this evening, and I do apologize for so many handouts, but truly unavoidable.
Where are we, John? What's this one look like?
One is from the fire chief, Fred Mitchell. It's a quick paragraph here, but he is in support of the fire hydrant locations and the proposed access with the proposed turnaround. Board members did get that design electronically for this meeting, and then another late entry for this evening is Larry Graham's second peer review. I don't know if you want to entertain that at all this evening.
Seven days, seven days.
Now, what is in store for this meeting, and it is on schedule as far as the applicant is concerned, they revised their plans that they're going to show tonight relative to Larry Graham's first peer review.
And we've already received them.
Yeah, and as a result of the board's last public hearing. And since that time, we've had a site inspection that was right before the last meeting. So they're prepared to talk about all that this evening, and that's the second peer review that we're just getting tonight.
We're going to leave that tonight.
For the next iteration of this public hearing, okay? Does that sound good?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Where are we, gentlemen? Want to point out some of the things you've done, or...
Yeah, I'll go over the, the items that were revised, and a couple of them very simple. Larry had indicated that design notes one through four on sheet one should be included as part of the conditions to the approval, and we have no problem with that. We actually added...
Can we see those, John?
During sheet one.
The cover sheet?
Of, of this particular plan?
The cover sheet. We're looking for the cover sheet.
I can't hear.
Hold on one second. All right, here we go. Hold on. Come here, come back here. Just keep clicking till you get it right.
So over on the left-hand side, in the middle of the sheet, it says general design notes. He was talking about notes one through four, which are just little notes that he wanted to incorporate into the, any approval, which we have no issue with. We did add two notes, one pertaining to restricted access to Merrill Court from, from the Denaples lot. Right now, there's no access, and there, there will be no access in the future. We just put a note to that effect. I think Larry was concerned about that.
Are you referring to number five?[1574.15]
Yep.
Merrill Court will remain private, no access?
Yep, those are the lots that he was concerned might have access and we're proposing there be no access from those two lots. It'd be private way. Um, so we just, it added that on, um, a note in the plan for that to, uh, be incorporated into the decision as well. Um, we also add note six, which pertains to easements, um, the private way. Any easements would be likely in only the right of way. Um, so if the town does not want them, we don't have to give them to the town. If they do, we can do it as well. So, it's up to the town how they feel, um, in terms of having easements for, well, we have to give water and utility easements to the utility companies, but the drainage beds are gonna be maintained by the owners. So, if the town doesn't want any, right, easement for the drainage, we don't have to give you one. It's up to the town. So, in case they do, we put it on there. Um, so his added comment was on the access to, uh, Denaplye's, uh, they accessed their lot from Rock Pond Ave and currently they have no access to the driveway going into, um, one ninety-six. And maintaining the same access to one ninety-six with, uh, to the back lot and to the new lot. And there's a gap between the end of the dri- end of the ri- uh, right of way, the proposed right of way and Denaplye's access. They only have a point. They don't have any frontage on.
Could you stall over a little bit, John? Thank you.
You'd wanna look at, um, probably sheet three for that. Sorry.
No problem.
Where is fifty-seven?
Yeah, maybe you could show in the.
Hold on.
In the window we just said.
I'm gonna get to there.
Let's move it up.
Do it again. Ooh, hold on.
There you go. Sit down. So, as you see at the end of, straight in on Merrill Court going to the, uh, south right towards the pond, the end of the, end of the turnaround, you can see the little triangular parcel between the, the actual right of way and Denaplye's is number seven, Rock Pond Ave, which is map six B fifty-eight. And Larry was concerned they might have access into the Merrill Court, which they do not. Uh, they don't have access to the property now and they, in, uh, literally its design, they cannot get access because that's part of the lot fifty-seven. So, it will not, they will not be able to cross that property line to get there. Uh, so we just noted that he was concerned with that and we always had it designed so there'll be no access other than for the lot, for number one ninety-six and the new lot on Merrill Court. So, we basically addressed his concern by the fact that he asked that we put a gap in there. There was already a gap in the, in the plans, in the initial filing, and it stayed the same. That hasn't changed. So, as you can see, there's no, no possible way Denaplye's could get to Merrill Court without trespassing. And the other, the other lot was, uh, I think it's one ninety-four ninety-two, the house to the right. Uh, he was, 'cause that line butts the line, but again, there's no, it's a private way, so there's no access, no, no re- no right for them to have access to it.
Is, is, forgive me, isn't there a rock wall in between the two that's, uh, that's the border?
Yeah, there's a stone wall and a.
A stone wall?
A rock wall and a road, trees.
Evergreen hedged, uh, we're planning on maintaining. We don't wanna, you know, disturb those at all.
Yeah, that, that rock wall is not gonna be disturbed, right?
Nope. Okay, uh, another item he asked, uh, to look at was the contour elevation of the floodplain, which should be on sheet four. Sorry. Most of it's gonna be on sheet four now. Um, we had it as, uh, elevation eighty-three and it's actually elevation eighty-four. So, I revised the plans to show that it's elevation eighty-four. Uh, we're not doing any work down along the pond. It's, floodplain's right along the pond. It's, uh, right along the pond edge. And we're not doing any work on lot fifty-seven at all or one ninety-six West Main Street. There's no work proposed on that, that house lot. Um, you see down the very bottom, there's a blue line, which is the wetlands, and right above it, there's a red line, which is the contour line eighty-four, which is the floodplain.
That's the theme of floodplain?
Yeah, so it's elevation eighty-four. It's down the bottom of the hill. Um, no work being done in the wet floodplain or the hundred feet of wetlands, actually. Should be corrected the abuttes, um, to two hundred West Main Street. It's actually, um, Mr. and Mrs. Lurch. Uh, we had a, an older abutte there, previous abutte, previous owner. So, we corrected that. And on, same on, um, on the right side, we corrected that abuttes also. Um, was, um, we had it as Rossiter. It's actually Smith. So, the front of the right, there's a, correct that abutte. Lot closures, we, we revised those and checked those and we provided calcs to Larry for review. So, and he doesn't, I know they're correct now, so he should be all set with that. Um, we added some information to allow them to close the lots. There was, at the back of the lot, we need to have some survey type information and some radial information, radial bearing information to be able to mathematically close the lots. So, we were able to do that for him.
Could you explain the notation, uh, one eighty-five lot corner to hydrant? Could you explain that? Where, where is the hydrant?
One eighty-five, from the lot corner to one eighty-five feet to the hydrant. If you look it up.
One eighty-five feet to the right is Rock Pond Ave. And the hydrant's at the corner of Rock Pond Ave.
Mm-hmm. So, it's one eighty-five to that and then from there to the back?
It's about two hundred.
The, well, where, where is the center of the frontage for the new lot in the back?
It's around the frontage, it's about the T, about the, uh, intersection of.
Probably right along the.
Would be right here.
Yeah. Yep.
And any idea what that distance is?
That's approximately a hundred and twenty feet from the, uh, edge of.
From the corner then?
Yeah.
So, one twenty plus, oh, okay. So, you're under three hundred feet.
Yeah.
Excellent.
And I think you spoke with the fire department on, on whether or not we would.
Yeah, he, he had provided a letter saying that he was okay with not adding a hydrant at this time.
And that's fabulous and it's great to get re- but our, our regulations say that, you know, it's supposed to be shown if it's the, the closest one within five hundred feet to the central line of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
I actually have that down as a question to ask.
Uh, item seven was the comment on the Denaplye access again, and he had asked that we. Comment seven of his previous, uh, Larry Graham's first review was, uh, a repeated comment about the Denaplye access to Merrill Court. And he recommended we separate Merrill Court from his property, which it already was. So, I just noted that we already had done that. So, I just responded by saying that it was already separated. On monumentation for the roadway, we are proposing iron rods to be set at all the corners, all the radio points and all the.
That's a waiver, right?
Yep, we asked for a waiver. Normally we would ask, we'd want, uh, stone bounds, but being a private way, um, it's like a lot corner of these people. So, um, we asked that we use iron rods.
We'll vote waivers. Probably later this evening, we'll, we'll probably look at those.
Okay. All right, as far as the roadway goes, Larry had a comment on, we had twelve feet of pavement with two-foot gravel shoulders on both sides proposed. We had revised that to fourteen feet of pavement with three-foot gravel shoulders on both sides to a total width of twenty feet. And we corrected that on sheet four, sheet five and sheet six. Um, the width is proper. Uh, we did, uh, forget to correct the waiver request, which is still saying twelve and two. So, we will correct that for the next, um, next meeting. Make sure it's proper on the front page.
All the waivers are listed on the front, on the top page?
Uh, all but one, which we, we'll add because.
Which one is that?
That's the, uh, waiver for the, uh, the grade at the entrance from three, uh, two percent to three percent.
Do you have the citation on that?
I do. Say I do.
I just read it.
Did too. It's maximum grade at the entrance, two percent versus three percent proposed. It's, uh, section three sixty-five dash thirty-six C.
Thirty-six C. So, that's a waiver request for, uh, greater than two percent grade at the entrance?
Yep, going to three percent, which is essentially what it is now. Yeah, he asked about the fire department, uh, approving the T turnaround, which they have. You have that memo. So, we. And then he asked that we change the vertical curve length at, on the curve, on the, on the roadway from eighty-foot length to fifty-foot to decrease the amount of proposed cut, which we were able to do.
Oh, sorry.
It's by sheet five.
Two steps ahead, sorry.
Nope. So, we were, uh, where are we?
On the corner.
There we are. You only have a vertical curve on one side, huh?
No, no, that's, that's a horizontal curve.
Well, no, no, the, the radius, I mean.
Radius, that's the horizontal radius. Yep.
You only have one radius, it's.
Yeah, 'cause it goes to a point, so we can't create one on that side. So, we're asking for a waiver on that.
That's a waiver as well.
We, we have that waiver on, on the plans. Uh, we can maintain the twenty-five foot radius of the pavement, though. So, we're providing twenty-five foot radius for the pavement, which is what the fire department also needs on both sides. So, the pavement radius is better than what's there now. It will be better than what's in there, there now. Um, it meets, meets the requirement.
And you're only, you're, you're only proposing fourteen feet of pavement?
Fourteen feet of pavement with three-foot gravel shoulders, so it will be twenty-foot wide.
Doesn't the regulation call for eighteen feet? The, is, this is a court, right?
Yep. We asked for a waiver on that as well to get to fourteen.
The list is long.
Seven waivers.
The list is long.
And, you know, it's, it's a driveway for two lots, so we're trying to keep it, you know.
It's a roadway. It's a roadway.
And we get the twenty feet of access, though, through the gravel, through the gravel sides, uh, which is what we need to have for the fire truck, uh, access. So, Larry's, Larry's speaking about is the vertical curve, which is the curve, the curve, the, uh, transition from up to down on, on the roadway profile, which is on sheet five. Uh, Larry had asked that we reduce the length of that to decrease the amount of cut, which we were able to do. And sheet five has been revised to reflect that change.
Flatten up the grade, in other words.
Well, yeah, it flattens, well, it actually makes it follow the existing contour more closely as opposed to having a more cut in the, um, to make the curve flatter. He also asked that we put stop signs and street sign in, which we proposing up there. It says stop, stop. It should say stop once. Related that.
That would be on the left-hand side of the driveway, of the, of the accessway?
Yep, there'll be a stop sign on the right and a street sign on the left. And it will say private way as well on the street sign.
Did you run through them all?
Uh, not yet. The typical, um, road cross section, we revised that to indicate, um, the shoulders and the, we're gonna have the, we're proposing to have the roadway super elevated from the side on the wall where the wall is, slope it back into the property, not.
Keep it away from the neigh.
Keep it away from the neighbor. And we also have the.
On site.
We have the drainage ditch and the infiltration system on the right-hand side, which is where all the water's gonna flow to. So, we can maintain, uh, uh, flows without runoff infiltration trench, uh, by keeping the water away from the neighbors. That was a concern of Larry's and the neighbors as well. He had a question on the underground service to lot fifty-seven A, which we're showing now, uh, in the, in the right of way, and it cuts across the property at the end. Um, he had a question on the service, structural service to the back lot.
Yes.
The back lot has.
That question too.
Overhead, overhead service from Rock Pond Ave.
But this is a subdivision and you have to provide the service underground.
Well, it's existing, so we're gonna leave it as it is.
So, is that a waiver? Utility shall be fed underground.
Guess we could ask for that waiver, yes, if that's, if it's, um, required. I mean, it's existing as it is now. So, we, let's kept it as the way it was. So, I mean, but guess we'll ask for a waiver on that. Um, we can add that to the list.
I would certainly recommend that they ask for a waiver for it as, even if we do run it underground, uh, Georgetown Electric is not gonna come up and remove that pole. So, we're gonna have to run underground utilities up the roadway, past an existing utility pole to an existing house. It just seems a little redundant.
It's part of our regulations.
True.
Trying to get everything in performance with the regulations.
Yep.
I mean, the, the board may very well grant the waiver, but you need to ask it. We need to vote it.
Certainly.
I sort of understand where you're coming from, but, um, I'd hate to, there are a number of courts and lanes that have existing. And if they're fed by overhead wires now, I don't wanna be in the position of, uh, it, it just gets ugly. The new lots that are created would all be fed underground, but then you'd still have a pole feeding. It just doesn't, to me.
Sure.
I guess I have to think about it a little bit.
Certainly ask for the waiver.
Maybe I have to think about it. Maybe I need to sleep on that one. Anything else?
Uh, yeah, really good.
What else?
See you on. Uh, also was, he had a question about the water service to that particular lot, uh, lot fifty-seven. So, we're showing a new water.
Water serving.
We're showing a new one down the middle of the road to that and to the new house. Question on the leach area, um, for the back lot. The little back lot actually has a passing septic, title five septic system.
Tank?
Nope, it's a septic system. It has tanks to the left of the house. As you're looking at it on the screen, the tanks are down, right where it says the system tanks to the left of the house.
Where's the field?
There's a tank and a pump chamber down there. Pumps it up past the shed to the other side of the driveway, and that's where the leaching system is right now, existing.
So, in the woods there?
It's right at the edge of the pavement, right? To the right of the garage, right where the little arrow, right in the middle of the screen now, right there.
Approximately twenty-foot gravel section off the edge of the pavement before that stone wall. The stone wall's roughly the hundred-foot buffer.
It's a, it's a.
So, it's in the hundred-foot buffer right now.
And hadn't inspected before it was purchased and it passed, or recently, in the past year it passed inspection, so.
Do you wanna say something about that?
Yeah, I would, thank you. Um, I'm trying to, to think back when you first started. Now, you, what happened here was that you had three parcels and you combined them all into one.
Um, originally, way back, back in the forties and fifties, yes, that was done. It was combined.
So, yeah, because the assessor's records now, it's all one lot.
Right.
Okay. That piece that you have close to the water.
Mm-hmm.
Years ago was a subdivision. Is that correct?
Um, it was an old camp lot, so I don't know how it arrived.
Well, that, that lot, I, I would not accept, approve that for, for this project because, um, number one, it's probably, if you didn't have the other plans, it would be a pre-existing non-conforming.
It is pre-existing.
Because it was done before zoning. And number two, because you've added all that land to it, you've changed it.
We didn't add anything to it. We're taking away from it, actually.
Yeah, but today, that's all one lot.
It's, this is what it looks like right here today, that, that plan right there.
So, if you're, if you're gonna break that up, that lot has to be meet zoning and it's fifteen thousand square feet.
It does.
Yes.
Meets fifteen thousand square feet. It meets the frontage.
Instead of, you, I'm there, I saw twelve A.
Saw what? Well, the, well, the sheet, I think she's gonna mention three again.
Do you see that?
Three. Is there, is there a size showing for the amount of, um, existing?
Lower lot.
Push it up a little bit.
It's, uh, sixteen thousand, it has a hundred thousand more, more than it needs.
Put it, push it up.
Hold on one second.
Fingers getting stuck?
No, it just won't do.
Static on the fingers.
Just won't do what I want it to do. Here we go.
Yeah, sixteen thousand one hundred fifty-four square feet, right?
Yeah, it's a thousand.
CBA of fifteen thousand six hundred thirty-eight.
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
That's the new lot area for that property.
Right, 'cause we're taking out the roadway area and the new lot area for the new lot, which is fifteen thousand as well.
So, you're gonna have two lots that are fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Sixteen and fifteen.
They both, they both been done. Let, let's go, the building inspector has reviewed the plan and, and agrees that they conform to the zoning. So, I mean, I showed the setbacks. I showed everything that needs to be shown for, to be able to, uh, to indicate it conforms.
But the assessors have it down as almost an acre.
Correct, yeah. If you add all of them together, it's almost an acre.
Nine or something.
So, the two lots together is thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand.
Okay.
And about seven thousand for the road. So, you end up with forty-two thousand, twenty thirty-seven thousand, which is just under an acre.
Little over, huh?
Just under an acre, just under an acre, sorry.
Yeah.
If you go back to.
That's the lot that I think, I, I just don't like. It's too, too close to the, to the water. Uh, that, that spoils that whole project to me, is that, having that little lot right there, right on the water.
You're talking about the house that's already there.
That's already there. Merrill, I think is the name. That spoils it for me to approve this.
Well, it is RA.
It's bigger than the other lots.
I know it is.
It's bigger than two lots of buttoning it.
Yeah. So, your, your plan would be, or whoever is going to buy that, would be to renovate it or knock it down and build a huge four-bedroom house?
No, there's limitations because of the wetlands, buffer zone. If you go back to sheet four, you'll see the buffer zone is almost an entire lot. So, there's limitations on what they can do. Um, in terms of expanding the system, if we get the system outside the, outside the buffer zone, which is why we're showing the proposed future reserve area up above, and, uh, still be on the lot, um, we could potentially expand it into a possibly two-bedroom house by adding up.
I certainly can't speak for conservation, but in my experience, there's no way, um, they would grant permission to expand the footprint of that existing house.
Right, but you can go up.
So, your plans are just to keep that house as it is?
Yeah.
It's a shack.
Any, any, any remodeling the house would have to go through permitting, so, which would be through the conservation.
It can certainly be renovated, but, I mean, it's.
You're not changing it.
It's extremely limited in the capacity to expand it.
But the main thing is, at this point, where did I see it? I saw, um, there was a, a proposed septic.
Yeah, sheet four.
Reserve.
I'm just showing that it can be done, just so that they needed to replace it, they can put it up there.
Well, yeah, that's important. That is important.
I mean, they wouldn't wanna cut all the area out, so they wouldn't be able to replace the system.
Right.
It's good to have an area that you can put your system back.
Right here.
Yep, and that's what we're proposing right there is showing it that it could be, you can put a system up there if need be. Right now, it's working, so there's no need to replace it.
But the proposed new lot, the proposed new lot, well, it's, it's not because. See, here's the weird part. You go from here and, excuse me, that, that's the frontage for here?
Yep.
And you even have to share a little bit. These are two are sharing.
Well, that's, uh, gonna be an easement for driveway, 'cause so we can get across it, yep.
And what I don't get, and I'm, I'm not questioning the, uh, the building inspector in any way, is the way the definition works, it usually works that you take this point and this point, the left and the right, from the center, and you measure. And that's where you get your frontage. And the unique thing about this is you have a lot of curves. So, if you ran a sine wave up and down like this, you'd get your frontage with half the distance that you really needed.
Well, the, also I can say, the building inspector makes the call. He's reviewed the plans and he agrees that it conforms to the regulations.
He reviews the, and he reviews them, and he makes the call when you're going for your building permit. I get that.
Zoning is, is in purview of the building inspector.
Absolutely.
So, he says it's good, therefore it is.
He says that fits the definition.
That's my problem, but we make the, we vote on the special permit.
That's a good point, well taken.
Planning board.
At any rate, um, we can save that debate for another time with, uh, with the building inspector. Anything else in the, um, in the review there?
Yeah, we, um, provided drainage report to him, he has reviewed it, but it's in, it's in that second response, which I will hold up until the next meeting to respond to. I did review it, there isn't many big issues with it, so I don't think there'll be any issues, correct any issues? Uh, they're a minor, uh, he says so himself, and, so. And that's, that's, oh, we added the, the roof runoff, dry wells, we added that to the plans as well, and erosion control, um, which were not on the original plan. Again, we have no work in the buffer zone, but yes, it's good to have erosion control around our site, so.
Always good to have.
We had that.
Always good to have. Also, the erosion control by law, too. Anything else?
Uh, that's it for now, until we come back for the review, for the second one.
At this point, I'll take some comments, if there are any comments from the, uh, from the audience. This is for, what is this, One Ninety-Six West Main Street? If there are any butters, or, uh, town officials, or anyone that just would like to make a comment about this, uh, this is a public hearing, and just, uh, raise, raise your hand. Call us your name, and, sir, state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Tom McGrane, Avroine Rock Pond Ave. I don't have a huge amount of objection, objections to this, I don't directly abide it. I do have a couple of problems, I think the planning board does a great job, I think everybody that volunteers in this town does great stuff. If you set up a set of rules for something, I think there should be abided by. I don't think waivers should be given when there's enough land to build supposedly the subdivision right. I get about the access going across from what they call a private way, Rock Pond is considered a traveled way, and if you research it, you can't just obligatorily just eliminate it, it can't be just gone, just because you put a wall up. I don't know a lot, but what little I do know, it's just like a road anyplace else. That, that right of way still exists, whether anybody uses it or not. And as I said, it's more, if, if they have the, the right amount of land, they should build it right. They should abide by all the, all the planning board rules, and, uh, there should be no, no give or take, especially with one of those buildings so close to the pond, which a lot of them are in that area, I agree, my house is probably the furthest away in, in that whole area from the pond. But they've also already clear-cut part of the property, and I know that's not on you, that's on a different department. And it's a very small house, so I don't understand what they can do to make it, as everybody, you've lived in this town long enough, Byron Merrill lived in that home for a long time, it's, it's a very small house. I don't see how a family could move in there, maybe a single person or something, and it does need to be rehabbed, I do get that. And I know it has to go in front of the building inspector, but now, you've, you've almost created a hardship, because now you've split that lot, so if somebody wants to live there, they have no alternative, if that's bought, and they say, we need to go up, they have a hardship, because there's no, no other place that they could rebuild their home.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir?
I think I'll, um, add on to that.
Sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, uh, my name is Ryan Lurch, I'm at Two Hundred West Main Street, budding to the left, if you're looking at this fight. Fifty-six, or Six B Fifty-four, oh, sorry.
Is that you?
That's me. Um, I have a driveway extension that goes up, that's not noted there.
That's, yeah, that's a bad, uh, that's a bad draw.
Um...
Very, very bad car, too. Very bad car, too.
In their defense, it's not their fault, I pulled it, and it shows the same thing. Um, uh, you guys were alluding to it before, but if you would indulge me for just one second. If you want to go back to worksheet WS two?
Two. Two.
So, under, um, utilities, they mentioned that they will put in a proposed site, a proposed septic for the, uh, house on Fifty-seven. And I think that Larry Graham had mentioned that, you know, they're gonna have to remove six feet of dirt in order to get to, you know, to be able to put in a leach field. And the response they provided was that this is only a proposed location. So, I think my concern is, if it's a proposed location, well, where else would it go? I know the septic they mentioned passed Title V, but it's a very, very, very old system. And by granting these waivers with this road, you're essentially forcing any new septic system to be within that hundred-foot, uh, water line. If you see where the proposed is, and you see where the hundred-foot water line is for Fifty-seven, there's really no other place on that map they can put it. So, if they ever need a new septic system, that house, or if they expand the house and they need a bigger septic system, there's absolutely nowhere for them to put it in this. And that's, and keep in mind that that is like that only with the waivers granted for this new, uh, road that they're proposing. So, there already is a button in the line, and that's, you know, pre-waiver appro, uh, sorry, post-waiver approval. So, I just wanted to add that, and then I know that we have a ton of people represented here, uh, but there was also a, a bunch of others that couldn't make it due to scheduling conflicts. So, I think, you know, the, every butter, I think, has their, has their own concerns with this. And that's, I'm pretty much gonna leave it at that, I'm sure everybody else has lots of comments that are gonna be similar to what I'm gonna say next, so I'll just let, uh, let other butters have a turn. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Roberta Pesci, Six Rock Pond Ave. Probably a silly question, because this is the first meeting I've ever thought of. Is there a maximum amount of waivers you can have, or is this common to have, like, I don't know, how many did I hear tonight, at least six? Who knows what came the last evening? I didn't know whether there was a maximum that you could have.
I would say that the maximum amount of waivers would be the number of wa, of regulations that we have, because...
Then you could ask for one for...
You could certainly ask, it doesn't mean you're gonna get them, but you could certainly ask, and, uh, if you're concerned about any waivers that may have been granted, uh, for this project previous to tonight, we have not yet granted any waivers, we haven't discussed them or, or voted any of them yet.
My only other concern is the road that we live on, it floods in the springtime.
And you're referring to Rock Pond Ave?
Rock Pond Ave, right. It floods in the springtime, it does. It's a traveled way, it isn't supported by the town in any way, I mean, we have potholes like that right now in the road that has to be, have to be taken care of by the homeowners. I'm just afraid if there's any more water that runs down that road, I'm gonna end up living on an island.
Duly noted, thank you. Is there, sir, state your name, please, for the record.
Grand Mall, Four Rock Pond Ave. Can you bring back the map of the overall?
The, the, the cover sheet, or the...
The sheet with all the different lots, there you go.
Yeah, which is not accurate, we got that from our assessor, sorry.
We get the idea. Right now, the way it is, anytime you have a heavy rain, see that little road that comes from there, from the proposed, or the street?
Yes, yes.
That becomes a small river. And if you'll notice, our property is at the end of that river.
Are you, are you here, search line?
No, with the, the Six B, Sixty-three, and Six B Sixty-three is up higher.
This one here.
Okay. What happens is...
That's Six B Sixty-three.
Where the whole thing?
With the dog bone.
Oh, okay.
Big piece, the road goes, the road goes through it.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, what happens is, whenever you have heavy rain, the water comes down that street like a river. And our concern is that they're gonna be taking, putting more pavement and possibly increasing the amount of water that comes down there. As it is now, we've been flooded down at the bottom near Ninety-seven. Right near, there's a, a drain in it, but that gets completely flooded at times, and we're, yeah.
Are you saying this is a catch basin here?
Yeah, it's a catch basin.
Further down West Main.
Oh, it's, it's a, it's a drop, so.
Yes, so we're at the bottom, and it's blocked.
And it heads to the pond.
And we are, and the water comes down that way, so any water coming off there...
And heads to the pond.
Doesn't head to the pond.
Doesn't head to the pond.
It heads to our, it heads to our property.
Goes this way.
Yep. On the right side of, um, Rock Pond Ave, um, at, at the edge of our property, there is a, um, culvert that goes under Route Ninety-seven that's blocked right now, that's supposed to be fixed once they redo the roads. But anytime it rains really heavy, coming from Ma, West Main Street, it comes right into our property and goes into that, uh, an area in our property that starts, I mean, it has gotten flooded quite a ways up on our property, um...
Yeah.
And we're, we're just concerned that if it...
Can I ask, is that, is that, uh, when it rains, or it snowmelt, or both, I mean, is it just all the time?
Mainly, mainly rain, um...
Mainly rain.
Mainly rain, but yes.
That's right.
And since there isn't much pla, many places to put the snow.
No place.
And it's very tight, any extra water coming down is unwanted.
What do you do when it creates a problem for you? You call Peter?
Drive real slow.
See, there's...
But, sorry, I have pictures of, uh, a duck pond at the end of our property, coming out into the street.
You never asked Peter Durkey to look at it?
Oh, yeah.
It was...
He said, we'll fix it someday. But it's still, the amount of water, even if that was fixed, the amount of water that comes down, we don't want to add to that. And we're worried about it.
Be careful to check the, uh...
Because that's related to Diane's property line, any water coming out there, it's just gonna come right down that road.
And you mentioned the road, um, I, I have a little bit of discomfort. It's, it's very convenient to see that those dotted lines go over there and then just stop immediately on Six B Fifty-seven. But was, was that road ever discontinued?
It seemed to have a...
Yes, uh...
State your name for the record, please, sir.
Tom McGrane, Avroine Pond Ave. The road actually went almost down to the boat ramp.
It goes to the boat ramp, does it?
No, it was a turnaround.
Oh, I got the drawings.
Way down there, uh, for Six B Fifty-three.
Well, it's just down.
Yeah, actually, past, yeah, past that. And for some reason, one family bought a couple of lots there, and they, they just put up a wall, and don't know, there was some kind of agreement made with the people that lived at the time in Sixty-eight Five B. And they were gonna still get access if something was ever done, but I don't know, I don't have any documentation on that. But that road did go all the way, I only know because my neighbor from when we first moved in had lived there for fifty-five years before we'd been there, and we were there, we'd been there thirty-eight. And that road did go all the way down, um, and it was a turnaround, it was a turnaround there.
I'm sorry, sir?
I have the drawing that shows it.
Uh, is, is that a, a plan registered at the registry date?
It's in the, uh...
Yeah.
I've got it.
You have two.
I have two, yeah, yeah, he left it for me, the previous owner.
That one?
Yeah.
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 Does any of it exist now, the turnaround?
Yeah, I think I found that at some point.
This was submitted with her actual...
It's all, it's all...
The, the turnaround still exists.
Did the lawyers have it on their property? You have the, you have the road on their property?
It's a traveled way, so it's legally, it's legally owned.
If I could ask...
Is it there?
If I could ask, sir, is that Six Twenty-nine, Nineteen Forty-seven plan, right, registered at the registry date?
Yes.
It is. And that seems to be showing it quite some distance away and going right through, and it says traveled way. So, what do we know about Georgetown's official abandonment of that?
Georgetown wouldn't abandon it, because it was a private way, so Georgetown would not abandon it, it was not a public way. Private ways do not need to be abandoned by anybody other than the people who own it.
And the people that owned it?
People who owned it was Mr. Gordon, I believe, who did most of the lots here, he created most of these lots, if you look through all the records. He created it right away, and my, that's my opinion, that's right, I found out for research, and he also owned Mr. Merrill's lot before Mr. Merrill did. And he dealt with the people who owned Mr. Lurch's lot next to him, because neither one of them wanted to go through their property anymore, so they stopped it. And they made their own driveways going out, which is why he have a driveway, and he has a driveway little strip, because Mr. Gordon sold the predecessor to Mr. Lurch's property, that little strip where his driveway is now, so they put their own driveways out, and he stopped it.
I, I hear you, the, 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 um...
And the same with the circle, it was down on the next people's lot over there, the circle's not there anymore.
I get it.
It's gone. No one can use it, so.
My discomfort is...
That's discontinued past me, because it's no longer there.
At what point does a private drive, a private traveled way, that has many people using it, what right, and at what point do those folks still have the right to use it? John, do you have any information for me on that, or anything like that?
The only way a private way like that can be legally dissolved.
Okay.
All right, is that the deeds, everybody that owns property that has rights of travel over that way.
Right.
They, they give up those rights, and their deeds are amended accordingly. So, if we really wanted to get to the bottom of this, um, let's, if you look here. All, all these people, right now, are utilizing that right of way to gain access to their properties, right?
Right.
To this point here, right? Now, I would say technically, all of these people, at one point in time, and they still may have it if their deeds haven't changed, have the right to pass and repass over this roadway, and they gain that right through reference on their deed.
Right.
Right? Now, again, if we want to get really into the weeds on this, we, we do know through that Twenty-nine plan, this right of way continues all the way down here. So, anybody that owns property, um, within that right of way, or fronting along that right of way, or cutting through that right of way, they all have the rights of passage, pass and repass. We don't, we don't know, and I don't know if you know, um, by looking up all of these deeds, if you've done that.
I, I have.
Do those, do those deeds make reference to that access easement?
I will, I will have to investigate that further in terms of what their deeds say, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure that the owner of the Locust site, the owner of the Lurch property, and the owner of the people probably beyond that, where the circle was, all agreed to discontinue it amongst themselves. Now, when you have a right of way, when you have a right of way to use the right of way, when you have a right to use the right of way, it's usually to your lot. Doesn't say you can go beyond your lot, it's to your lot, to get access to your lot. So, that means come down to your lot, you stop there.
It means in both directions, though, they could've come down the other way.
Didn't go, it didn't go anywhere other than the other people's lots, so you only have a right to go to the other people's lots, you only have a right to go to your lot. You got to go through the people's lots that you have to get through to get to your lot and stop. So, the people on, the three people on the left side who had that thing in their property, decided to get rid of it by putting their own driveways out, and they didn't need to have a turnaround anymore, so.
Is Six B Fifty-three A the boat ramp?
I think it is.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Fifty-three A is the boat ramp.
That's taken, that's... Fifty-three, I'm sorry, Six B Fifty-three A.
Fifty-three A is the boat ramp.
That was taken by the state by eminent domain in, I wanna say nineteen sixty-five. We should look at that to see where the road went then.
Well, you can reference it on that, that plan, the Twenty-nine plan, can I see that, Jake?
Yeah, that's faster for that, though.
Yeah, it stopped short of the boat ramp.
The circle was actually, I believe, on partly on the Lurch property and partly on the next one there, beyond that. It was actually partly on two of those properties. And there was a lot configurations, that, that lot is, that those lots don't even look like that anymore, they're all changed.
Actually, I took that plan and I overlaid it on, um, on another map, and I, I guess you can look at that if you want, or if you want to enter that into the record. Gives you an idea of where it is, and you'll see it does stop right before the, uh, the boat ramp, but it stops because the plan stopped.
Yep.
So, there was no more of the plan shown, the boat ramp isn't showing.
It may be a matching line.
Yeah, that's the boat ramp.
That's the boat ramp, okay.
So, we would need to look at the deeds there.
Could I also, could I mention that my proposed private way, um, doesn't cross the traveled way as drawn on that Nineteen Forty-seven plan? So, if one of the butters feels compelled to cross and recross Six B Fifty-seven, they can do so without traveling on this proposed private way.
Looks like there's been a lot of subdivision of the property.
Oh, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
The location, what he's trying to say is, the location of, of that traveled way is not affected by the subdivision of, of the roadway.
We're not impeding the traveled way that's shown in that plan.
Doesn't go that far, we don't go that far, we don't get into that, we don't come down to that.
So, does your deed say access to this right of way?
Does that deed say it? No, no.
Your deed, for this property?
Because he gave up the access.
Where did he give it up, though?
In his deeds, but when he, he actually...
That's who we were talking about.
The previous owner... The previous owner, well, one of the previous owners, Mr. Gordon, who owned a lot of this land, he said that by himself. He's the one who created these rays and these these lots, um, the small lots that they are, with the houses right next to the pond, such that they are. And he created this way. It's, it was camp lots, what it was, was camp lots. You hop into camp, like some camp lots, and there's a little tiny path that goes back over his house. And that's what these were. And what happened was, at some point in the forties, fifties, I can't exactly remember when,
Forty-seven?
Mister, well, it was there in twenty-nine, so it was after that, probably in the fifties, that Mr. Gordon and the neighbors to the left, they decided that they didn't want to have it. You all did?
That has to be.
I wasn't there at the time.
Folks, 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 folks.
One of you all did.
I can't listen to everybody. I have to listen to one person. Okay, did did you wanna make a comment, miss?
Yeah, uh Ryan Lurch, two hundred West Main Street. I'm not sure what he's referring to, but on my, um, when we bought our house, we noticed, because we said, what is going on here with this with this dotted line? They said that it was still legally valid, um, traveled way.
You were told that by a realtor.
Yeah, and I have, I I can certainly provide the committee with uh what was provided to me uh when I purchased the property.
So it was on your deed then?
That's that's how it was explained to me. I I will provide you with the map that shows the traveled way.
Deed, that's what we're talking about, deed.
It's not, it's not, it's not mentioned in purchase deed.
Right, I'll I'll provide what I have uh to the committee, as soon as I have the chance to get to it. But it, I was told that the active way is is still legally valid.
The same gentleman that he's referring to, I spent a lot of time with too when I first moved into the neighborhood. He told me, they all got together, they were sick of the traffic coming through, looking for access to the pond. And they agreed that all of the houses beyond Denapoli's had access to Main Street without using Rock Pond.
Right.
Alright, so they rolled a couple of boulders over there and nobody used it anymore. It was back in the day when they didn't use it.
But they didn't do it legally in the deeds man.
Maybe, maybe not.
The question is, was it done via deed?
I don't think so. Well, I don't know.
And does someone at this point, my my concern is this, I'm a planning board member. If I were to vote to approve this, I'd be one of the five people that make it happen. And if the person in six B fifty-four actually does still, even unknown to me, have a right to that road
Yeah.
and the use of that road, I'm physically breaking it right now by approving this subdivision. So that's my little bit of interjection there.
We can demonstrate that you won't be, because we can show you where it was.
And I appreciate that.
We can show you where it is, and then we can, we'll show it on the plan and.
We'll show the deeds, show that all the deeds are.
Someone wants to use it, more power to them.
We're not proposing any activity to cross that traveled way as it's shown.
So it'll still be there.
Actually just read through the deed from Mr. Lurch's property, and it makes no reference to any rights to pass or repass across anything.
Okay.
It doesn't mention even easements of record, which they commonly do.
Tom McGrain again from A Rock Pond Ave. I didn't mean to bring up, because I think it's great that those three houses have their own entrance and access as opposed to running down Rock Pond Ave, it's about twelve feet wide. My question just becomes, if you're granting all these waivers and you're gonna have that original house on a small lot sitting there, but yet they're still gonna get electricity off that pole from Rock Pond Ave. And as they already said, electric light doesn't wanna deal with the poles that exist on that road or the wires that exist on that road. So you're giving that, giving them a break to have electricity to that house through Rock Pond Ave, but yet they're gonna be separate and they're gonna get what they want. It's another thing that if you talk, if it boils down to a wave or something, what is that? Cause now that part, that line is crossing Diane's lot at some point.
Do we know it? Any other comments? Oh, miss?
Yep, Diane Denapoli, uh seven Rock Pond Ave, which I believe is six B fifty-eight. Um, I echo Graham's concern about the water, uh especially now that they're talking about putting in a twenty-foot wide, you know, asphalt just right by my property that, cause I have had my basement flood a few times in really heavy rains, so that's another concern of mine, where you're gonna have less, you know, absorption, less soil. Um, I'm concerned about the drainage and the runoff, but I'm also very concerned about are they really going to, I I appreciate that they've gone through a lot of work, get all these plot plans done and the drainage plan and everything, but are they actually going to do everything? Because, you know, a few times tonight, we've heard him say that, you know, that it's important to have these erosion controls and that there's no work being done in the floodplain. Yet, they raised every single tree from the house down to the waterfront, so I'm.
Keep in mind, we're talking about the floodplain, we're not talking about the wetland buffer.
Okay.
The floodplain is is like, that 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 red line near the pond?
Yes.
That's the flood.
That's the water.
That's the flood.
No, it's not the water, that's where the water will rise to in a hundred years' time.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it's the flood.
Okay. Well, I'm still concerned just because, you know, I'm pretty certain they give permission to do that, and so I'm just concerned, are they gonna do other things without getting the proper, going through the proper guidelines and regulations? Um, you know, we all know, you can't just cut down those trees, so.
How many trees are you planning on cutting?
They already did.
They already did.
They already did.
Clear cut.
Clear cut.
When was it done?
Yeah.
About two months ago?
Was this?
Uh, we just walked into a little tree.
We were just there.
What what was this, um, within that hundred-foot buffer?
I think Steve needs to go see.
Oh, yeah, it's from the front deck all the way to the water. Clear cut.
From the front of the house.
It's, it's.
We didn't go to the front of the house.
Oh, no, we didn't go to the front.
So there was you.
I think we have to have Steve go look at that.
That that certainly, um, thank you for that, um.
Well, that helps, right?
It just.
John, will will you make a note to contact the conservation commission?
Makes me concerned about following other regulations and guidelines and rules. I I have a legitimate concern about that, given given what has happened already.
Yeah, how many times?
John will contact the conservation commission about that and make a note that it was pointed out.
Yeah, can I just ask?
Sure.
Do you know if he's already been on the site concerning the tree cutting? Steve?
Steve? Uh, no, this is the first I heard about it. My understanding is, there's a tenant losing the house, um, so I can check with the owner and see what the deal is.
The Merrill house, somebody's there?
Yeah.
Somebody's living there.
And they cut down the trees?
They cut the trees around his house?
Oh, it clear cut from the tr- from the house all the way down to the pond.
So we were just there as a side.
But we weren't on that, we were on the driveway side.
Yeah, we didn't go to that side, we we never went to that side.
If you get out of the pond.
We didn't go to the pond side.
The, I mean, it was all, you couldn't even see Byron's house before.
You couldn't? Oh, okay. And and I remember looking around that and I could see during, you know, it was the wall.
There were so many trees there. Now you can see it from across the pond.
I doubt the renter would cut down all those trees.
Yeah, I would.
I would not think so.
How about, how about the big ones?
I don't know, I went to my house for the renter.
How about the property closer to uh West Main? Has that been stripped of trees?
No, not that I'm aware of. I just know because I can see that from my side door. Um, and I heard the chainsaw going one day, I'm like, what's going on out there? And it, and I didn't realize it actually, some of it had been done in the weekend I was away, and I heard about it when I got back and I saw it, and then who was out there another day? I don't know who it was, but.
Well, it's the responsibility of the owner anyway.
They had a sidewalk. They had a sidewalk that I looked up in.
Excuse me?
They had a sidewalk, I was out there and I didn't notice any trees cut down.
Well, we're we're not talking about trees. Any of you have pictures of?
Yeah.
It's pretty easy to see.
How would you help?
Okay, well, it's okay, I can't hear, I can't hear again, a bad hearing, a bad hearing, I'm sorry, tell me, what were you saying?
Pictures, she's got pictures, that would be helpful to compare.
To be honest with you, this this board doesn't deal with that.
Okay.
That that is something you wanna save your photographs for the conservation commission.
Okay. For conservation.
And uh if you could, with John, maybe John, you could maybe move those pictures to to uh Steve Przypinski to the con con. And and he can look into it. We really don't have that kind of jurisdiction.
No, but I'm saying my point is, my my concern because of that is, are they going to do everything that they're saying is being shown on all of these plans?
I understand, take it.
So is, well, I don't know what kind of oversight you guys have of that, like what kind of?
Oh, we watch, I'm like, oh.
Okay.
I have a reputation.
At this point, I'm not all that certain the vote's gonna be there to let them do anything, at this point.
Okay, that's, alright, alright, thank you.
Don't we, Jay?
I was just gonna ask, what what kind of oversight does the planning board have for subdivision like this, as far as ensuring that it gets built per plan?
Um, what we basically do is we have surety. Uh, before we give you your permit, uh you'll need to do covenants.
And then there must be some sort of inspection process that happens to ensure that that the construction gets done per plans?
BSC, BSC comes up.
So BSC is a private, independent?
They 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 watch you.
Consultant.
Review consulting engineer?
Yes, absolutely, you're a field engineer.
That would come out during construction?
During all, yes, that you pay for.
Ensure that.
That you're doing it right.
The finished site plan matches the proposed site plan.
That's the idea, yeah, that's how we do it.
Okay.
We have the peer review, yeah.
Barbara Hunt at four Rock Pond Ave. Um, in the previous meeting, I wasn't here, but I listened to it on the playback tape.
Exciting, wasn't it?
There was uh some comments about soil removal and what they were planning to do to get rid of the soil, and it gave me the impression that they were thinking about doing something that's gonna be close to the houses near the pond. There wasn't, there was some comments that it did not give me an impression that they maybe planned on removing the soil off the property because it was gonna be expensive or, I I'm I'm just wondering, cause there's that big hill, they've got a lot of soil, rock, whatever's in that big old tower hill. And they're gonna be digging a lot of soil removal for building this new house. Um, I'm just curious if there's been any further talk from the developers as to what their plan is to get rid of the soil? Cause there just seemed to be questions about it at the last meeting.
My understanding when we asked that was that uh it would be distributed throughout the site and pretty much all of it would be used, um.
And I don't see how that can be without causing a lot of runoff onto all our properties again, so.
Well, uh, we we can certainly, we can certainly ask you guys to check your calculations again, I mean, you're engineers, oh, you're engineer. And uh you know what's there, you know what's going to be, uh you can certainly find out what the delta is if you're gonna be bringing soil in or trucking soil out. And um.
I mean, cause if you look at the property, just the way it drops down from that lot down to Diane's lot, there's a big drop already. And I don't see how with all this soil that has come out of that huge hill, um, if they're gonna just put it on the property, is are we gonna have a huge hill on their property?
Erosion control, erosion control is is extremely important, absolutely.
Yeah, that's my concern, one of my concerns.
So it's something we'll be looking at.
Thank you. Lisa Pert, two O one West Main, and I live across the street, and I'm not sure what will happen, I mean, we're all below the street level there, we won't get any type of runoff from anything, but.
You're on the other side of West Main?
Yeah, on the other side of the street. But um I was also wondering if they're gonna widen West Main Street, would that affect anything to do with this whole development too? Cause they're supposed to come down and put new sidewalks in and widen the road, and if that would take away anything? And I just wanna say that I, if if they really don't have what they need to do this, I don't think you should grant this for them, cause obviously they're not being truthful about a lot of stuff, and I have the same concern, cause I know those trees were recently cut down also. And how nobody knows about it that's here, I don't know, but I just have a lot of concerns about this whole thing, and I just don't think it's fair for the neighbors to have to live with that. They're gonna be affected more than we will.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Being that we're not seeing any more folks with their hands up, we're gonna bring it back to the board and us. Tilly, did did you have something?
I already, yeah, I was concerned, everything that the neighbors said, commented on, topography.
I got one.
I'd like to find out about those trees.
Yes.
Do we have a late bloomer?
Yeah, just a quick, the road that they're putting in over there.
Did you say name of the road, sir, please?
Uh, Kyle Pert, two O one West Main. Um, this road or paved road, where is the water going that they're gonna create now? Is that gonna be going out to the street?
Currently the, currently the road does.
Down my driveway or?
Currently the driveway does exit, drainage comes off the driveway towards the street. There's a ten-foot driveway in now, we're putting a fourteen-foot one in. Um, so it's technically draining that way now, this is what the drainage shows, drains down to the left property corner, so everything kinda goes that direction. It stays in the gutter line of West Main Street, cause West Main Street, the edges of the road are lower than the the middle.
Yeah.
The way the road's designed, keeps the drainage on either side. And so right now, the water flows down, flows all the way down to the state ramp actually, cause there's no catch basin between here and there. Um, what we're proposing to do is is our driveway is gonna be super wide, it's be sloped towards the inside of our lot, and where that dark line right there is, he's pointing to it, is actually the infiltration, you get a swell there, it's gonna catch the water, gonna bring it to a catch basin, which we're putting in on the site. And that's gonna drain it into the, into a pipe, into the ground, it's gonna drain to the ground, and all good soil, uh, very rapid infiltration rate. And the calculations show that when we're done doing this design, that the water that leaves the property down at the north what we, probably the most point by the road, is less water than there is now. So that's what we're required to do, we're required to make sure we have no more water than was there before. So uh pre-development runoffs equals, post-development runoff equals pre-development runoff, so whatever we had going there before is the same amount going there after. And that's the same with the direction to the back of the lot, which is toward the pond. Uh, cause this, actually that hill separates the drainage, some of it goes to the front, some of it goes to the back. And we have to maintain the same amount of water going to the back as well. So we have two different areas where we study and we do a design for. And we've presented the calculations to Mr. Graham, he's reviewing them. So, um, we'll let the calculations speak for themselves and, you know, they have an independent consultant review them, to see if they work, so. I think that's my, we designed it so it would not affect any abutter off-site. There'd be no more runoff off-site than we have now. That's our mandate, actually, we have to design it that way. Not just in Georgetown, in every town that we do work in.
It's DEP.
DEP, federal government, EPA, it's everybody.
Tilly, do you have anything else?
No, that's all.
Bruce?
I I have a few concerns. Um, one is with the stor- the stormwater management on that. We're adding more impervious material in the driveway and rooftops there, and where the septic is old on the existing lot, I just feel that it it might cause it to fail a lot sooner and they'll have to put a new system in, probably in the next few years. You know, there's there's just a lot of concerns, that and and the um, oh, you know, the the roadway that we were talking about earlier, I think we we need to clear that, make sure that that's clear, and it's not in the deeds as a right of way. It's my biggest concerns.
Can I just point out something? Remember we were out on the site, the inspection, this driveway, this existing driveway, that's within the route of the previous right of way. And then you pointed out this structure, the garage, is right in the middle of it.
I believe it is very close, if not in the, the previous right of way.
Yeah, so this right of way, which ends here right now, used to continue right across the property and somewhere along the line that garage was built right in the middle of it.
Yeah, I'm not sure where it relates to the other house.
What I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, you know, a structure like that being built, it it kinda lends itself that this thing was dissolved. You know, maybe handshake and resolved, or maybe not amended deed-wise, but.
But no longer used, yeah.
There was also formerly a garage on the other side of the property line, on the Lurch property, a number of years ago. I don't know how long ago, but if you look at Google Maps and some other uh GIS maps in the town, it still shows on some of them, and I think it may be gone now, but there was another structure that impeded the traveled way.
So Mr. Chairman, just to follow up with Bruce's concern.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna hear from the Alphagan as part, as part of this. Um, what what are you willing to do to help resolve this issue with factual evidence uh for the next?
With relation to the the right of way, travel way?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get all the deeds together and I'll make a nice summary of them and give you a a review and then prevent sending those to you. If if the, in fact, that it still exists, I'll take the plans, we'll show them on the plan, show where they are, where they were. And if we don't impede them, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, then then do we want to, as a group, uh agree to have town council uh review the deeds?
I don't think we we presuppose that. I think what we do is we, you see your summary, uh put it all together, include the deeds, we can read deeds too. Uh, make it easy for us to read, and uh at that point, if if the board has any questions, at that point then, we could certainly have a title search done, et cetera. Go through town council, have a few of them done in some fashion. But let's look at it ourselves, I mean, we're big people, we can read maps and read words. I don't wanna, I don't wanna preload it for reviews.
It didn't sound like the abutters are interested in that. It didn't sound like the builders are interested in, in opening that, you know, right-of-way, so.
Yes, no.
We're gonna be spinning our wheels.
That's another point to take to.
I think the problem, the biggest problem is the water, the drainage. That's what, that's what you gotta be bored to.
And the power.
And, and what?
And the power.
And power.
And the power, Tilly's.
And the septic system.
Any other, uh, concerns?
And the septic, yeah.
Any concerns?
That, that's both been addressed, well, at least brought up.
John, could you pull up the, the title cover sheet, the title sheet? Because maybe now would be a good time to.
So if that existing septic fails.
Yep.
Is there space to put a new one in?
Well, that was what was being shown on, um, what was it?
But wasn't that being for the new, the new house?
No, no.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
They're leaving enough space there.
Can we, can we take a look at where the, the septic system for the new house is, please?
Yeah, that's sheet four. A little bit, there you go, up there.
So, those.
New septic system for the new house would be proposed to be out by the street. And then between the house and the septic is actually a infiltration system to deal with the runoff from the roof area. And then the infiltration trench deals with the runoff to the roadway. And as Bill pointed out, the existing pavement is about twelve, ten feet wide now. That's why we initially started with requesting a waiver to keep pavement to twelve feet, and Mr. Graham suggested fourteen feet.
Mr. Chairman.
The regulations call for eighteen.
Absolutely. I, I just wanna point out for the benefit of the audience, uh, this plan has all plans with the planning board. They're reviewed by a professional engineer, uh, person by the name of Larry Graham. He's been, uh, the planning board's consulting engineer, uh, for many, many years. And, uh, he has put a lot of emphasis already in the review of this plan relative to drainage. And, you know, just so you know, he's recommending enlarging what the applicant already proposed, enlarging the drain system so that it does handle. Yeah. And, um, he isn't through yet with his analysis, they're still working, uh, figuring out. But the drain system is being designed, as the applicant's engineer pointed out, it's being designed so that there isn't any more post-runoff than what exists right now in pre-development status. And they have to retain all the water, um, any extra water relative to additional impervious surface. They have to keep that all on the site, so they can't allow more water to run off post-development. And that's all being looked at and critiqued, uh, to the nth degree. And I think everybody agrees with that, um, you know, we're lucky as a town to have, um, such a competent, uh, consultant engineer reviewing our plans. Especially when it comes to drainage issues.
Are you going to have basements, guys?
Can we?
A basement?
Which, which one, the new house? Sheet one.
So you're going to?
This, this, go ahead.
He plans on having a basement.
The new house, yes.
Does Larry know that?
One, it's shown that way, um, he actually asked about the, the, uh, what are.
They're out of the floodplain, yeah.
It's, they're apart, house will be apart.
They're out of the floodplain.
The house will be high, I didn't think you were going to do a basement.
The house will be somewhat a mirror of the house in the adjacent lot, be very similar setup.
But they're out of floodplain, I mean, there's no prohibition in the, out of airbase.
Oh, that looks like a, um, a walk-in basement next door.
Yeah, that could possibly work on this site.
Yeah, that would be better, I would think. The trees that we saw on the site, is that, are they remaining, are you gonna cut anymore?
Um.
Tilly, you aren't gonna see many of the trees that were there.
I mean, you can't build anything there now.
You have to, those trees are gonna have to be cut down.
They're gonna be.
Well, I'm asking how many?
All of them?
I think, yeah, most of them.
All of those, yeah.
I mean, there's no building space there.
It's a, it's a wooded lot now.
Look, it's, it's all, it's all change, great changes there.
Yeah.
You can see that the area where it says proposed roof runoff drywall.
Yeah.
That area could remain untouched. There's an area along Lurch's driveway that can remain untouched, and there's the back property corner, um, the south west corner.
Yeah, thi- thi- this won't be touched, maybe this.
The edge, Tilly?
Yeah, so, you know, it's like three feet along the property line, it won't get.
You can build a house, no.
Well, they were gonna do a bike path on West Main Street. So you're gonna, have you been notified at all?
On the railroad bed?
No, on West Main Street.
Used to me.
It's gonna be a bike lane.
Yeah, just so everybody.
It's just part of the road, though.
In regard, you know, in regard to that particular issue, uh, the width of the right-of-way, West Main Street is from this point here on the north side, all the way over to this point here on the south side. So it's, um, it's a very wide right-of-way as right-of-ways go, um, fifty feet.
Fifty foot right-of-way?
Yeah.
Very typical of Georgetown.
Yeah.
Fifty foot is, but you need to have that much.
Now, the, um, the existing.
This is Main Street.
Yeah, the existing pavement width looks as though it's probably in the thirty range. So they do have twenty feet of, um, right-of-way to work with. And it's not so much that, they're not gonna widen the travel way, they're, they're proposing a bike way, pedestrian way.
They have to widen it then?
Oh, it.
They will have to widen it right there.
You can barely walk there now.
Yeah, I can't even get my mail, I can't get my mail on my mailbox, that'll get hit by a car.
I walk pretty often.
They're just gonna paint some lines, but.
This is the edge, if you look at this map right here, see that, that's the water line, the existing water line. So that's the edge of pavement line right there. The right-of-way extends all the way to here. So the bike way, pedestrian corridor is all, it's all gonna be on the south side of the edge of pavement, all the way to the property lines. So that's what you're dealing with as far as, um, the improvement along that corridor, you know, within the next few years.
Can I ask you just one question?
No, one moment, please, I have a question. John, if that's the case, then this shoulder here, showing this radii and this radii, that'll be gone.
It'll have to be modified.
Yeah.
That'll be straight, you won't have a radius there.
Well, no, the bike, the bike path, pedestrian corridor all has to, they, that has to be modified. That has to be modified through all of these driveways.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that there's no interruption in the accessway out to West Main Street concerning the, um, the bike way. But that's, that's in every particular design, you know, you have to provide for handicap access, you know.
But how much, how much of their land will be used for nothing?
No, it's all within the existing right-of-way.
So that rock wall is all gonna stay?
Yeah, okay.
And the rock wall in the back of it should, should stay.
Tilly, you're talking about this rock wall here?
No, on the front of it.
And this rock wall, right? Those?
Whatever the.
That's the end of the property line.
Stay, right?
Whatever the right-of-way measures out to be, there, there's no takings involved. If you wanna delay a project for decades.
Takes, uh.
It's not taking property. It'll never get.
Was there a question?
I just had a question of, um, John was, and it's prob- it's really not, it's kind of inane to this whole subject, but. I was under the impression that when the state was gonna do West Main Street, now, I don't know how far they were gonna do. And I know this has been in the works for ten or fifteen years and they're still doing the engineering. And they've gone from taking part of the hill down by Tressa Way to now it's gonna stay and the curve's gonna stay. But they were gonna put ten-foot sidewalks in, is that still, or is it just downtown?
You know, and I do wanna back up, okay? Because a plan needs to get to the twenty-five percent design phase, okay? And all the ducts have to be lined up, and then they have a public hearing. And all the butters on both sides of the roadway will get, um, a notice in the mail for a public hearing. So it's all being planned for, but it, depending on whether the public supports it or not.
No, I just scared you that it really has nothing to do with this, I don't wanna take up any more time.
Yeah, it is kinda.
In, in Massachusetts, seriously, nothing gets built unless the butters are, you know, amenable to it.
Well, just, just a point of curiosity.
Too many projects.
Let's get back to page one, yeah, yeah. Let's get back to that first page.
To the one, to the one lot.
First page.
Or the two-lot coin.
I have one question based on what you were just speaking about earlier about the drainage and the engineering, the engineer was looking at.
Oh, Bert, it's a this, this, oh, good, good.
Back to this project. Um, I noticed in the documents that, uh, we received about it, that there was a, a lot of very specific plan in terms of maintenance of that drainage system, that, I don't know who's gonna be duping it. But it's after every one inch of rainfall, they've gotta clean it out and do this and do that. And once a year, they've gotta maintain it, clean it out and do this and do that. Who's responsible for doing that?
That's the owners of the property, this is going to be a private roadway.
So they have to be informed of that when they buy that property, that that's their responsibility to make sure. Cause otherwise, then we're back to a situation where we could have flooding, right?
And who follows up on it being done?
Right, very difficult, very difficult, yeah.
They, they have.
How does that get enforced?
Yeah.
Basically, it's a private, private thing, we, we really don't have any enforcement.
These two live in town, right, both of you?
I do, yeah.
Do we have to say anymore?
You get his phone number, every time it overflow, every time, Bill?
You absolutely always have the right to consult an attorney if you wish to discuss runoff from your butters' property onto your property. It's a, it's a very hot topic now.
If, if we can talk about it, we're also a phase two community, we're also a phase two community in the perfect world that the EPA and DES has created for us, um, you know, there're gonna be people that are gonna go out there and inspect this, um, all of these drainage systems from here on out.
Probably testing the waters and everything.
I don't, I don't know, nobody knows where all the money's gonna come from for all these inspectors to be doing this, but, you know, in a perfect world.
It's all right, we have an extra million dollars now.
Right, in the perfect world that the regulations have created for us, um, you know, you know, there, there will be people out there inspecting and forcing them to, um, improve and maintain, you know, make sure that the system works. And if you believe that one.
It's all right, the Department of Revenue found an extra million dollars that Josh Hunt didn't even know we had.
I mean, Pe- Peter Durkey told me though, and, and I believe him, and this is the case.
With respect to MS four.
In this town.
Yeah.
They actually clean the catch basins.
Oh, yeah, they, they do, absolutely, it's part of our, our MS four annual plans.
Yeah, and they sweep, they sweep the streets.
That's all part of how we made our MS four requirement.
And I wish.
But getting back to.
And I wish all the towns, Cromwell, did what this town does.
Let's get back to this and see that perspective, could, could we scroll over and make it a little smaller, John, and maybe take a look at?
Sure.
Uh, what is it, the right-hand side of that, uh, where we're, uh, what is that?
How about this? That's small enough or you wanna go anywhere?
No, no, I, I'd like to see the writing where it's, uh, on the, that title page where it shows, um.
Oh, oh, you wanna go.
Requested waivers.
Hold on, hold on, you wanna go to the?
Now might be a good time.
You wanna go to this page?
Oh, I thought, that is the page, right?
Well, that's a separate one.
There it is, yeah.
Now, where, where do you wanna go, the waivers? These are incomplete, correct?
Right, we gotta do.
Yeah, we'll miss two of them or something like that?
No, two, if we do the electric, we'll discuss that.
Let me, let me enlarge it for the viewing audience.
And number four is incorrect, needs to be correct to be fourteen and three-foot gravel, shoulders on each side for a total of twenty feet.
Um, how does the board feel about, um, giving guidance? If some of these are allowed and other ones are not, they're gonna need to redesign the plan. How does the board feel about voting the waivers tonight? Tilly, you in favor of that, or?
Yeah, he's got more.
And there'll be more, and the next time they come back, they can put them on there, but at least, you know, they'll be able to say that the, the, the motion, the gra- the waiver was granted or not granted.
Mr. Chairman.
Are we good with that?
Can I just point out, um, you know, they are proposing, uh, twelve feet of pavement and two-foot shoulders. Larry Graham has critiqued it and he has advised the board to go with the fourteen-foot pavement width and three-foot shoulders.
Actually, we are proposing the fourteen, I just didn't change the typo on that.
Now, I mean, this is important too, because, you know, I think we're all advocates, everybody's on board with, you know, keeping roadways as narrow, the impervious surface, i- it's as narrow as possible, because any additional width that's unnecessary is just adding to flooding conditions.
Well, you're adding to the sizing of your, uh, stormwater facility.
Right, but you're also, you know.
But you're also, um, there, there are waivers.
Yeah.
Uh, waivers like, the, the first one, uh, the title block layout, you know, specifically how it's supposed to be drawn on the plan. Uh, that's, that's paper, that's paper. And straight name and pencil, that's, that goes back to probably the thirties or the fifties or whatever, when we didn't do, but do these things with CAD. Cul-de-sac diameter, right-of-way of the pavement, um, is that a waiver or is that a by right thing?
That's a.
It's an interesting question, because I saw the word will allow, which is unusual, because usually in regulations, it shall allow or may allow. So I don't know, uh, where that typo came from, if anybody knows where that came from.
But your question is whether or not that needs to be a waiver.
Well, I, I don't even know if that does need to be a waiver at this point in time.
I can take it off if it's not, but I, I don't know if, that's, I guess.
Yeah, I, I don't know that the board has discretion under the existing, uh, regulations to choose that. It says will allow. I don't.
And, and in most instances where we've had courts and lanes, yeah, we've allowed for Y or T-type turnaround.
And it has been allowed in the past, and the notes, uh, in what was passed, uh, when those were created, says will allow. Uh, doesn't, it doesn't seem to give any flexibility to the board, if the applicant wishes to have a T-type turnaround. Uh, property line radius, uh, pavement widths, pavement width, from my perspective, eighteen, eighteen feet. That is what's the, the standard, uh, dimension that's called out. I like to remind, remind everybody that these are baby subdivisions.
Right.
So you have a subdivision, if this was a standard definitive subdivision, you would be quite, required to have fifty-foot right-of-way with twenty-six feet of pavement. Uh, this is a truncated version of that in our regulations. And, uh, this would, uh, this is an eighteen-foot width called for as a standard in this. Actually, that already is waived. I mean, it's how you look at it.
I, you know.
I already see that waiver has been granted, it was granted by virtue of the, of the.
And not to be the total devil's advocate.
Oh, absolutely, go for it.
But if you travel around town, and I've measured quite a few roadways lately, you know, most of them are between seventeen feet in width and, and twenty feet in width, and they're handling, you know, hundreds of cars a day, you know? So here you're dealing with a two-lot subdivision.
Two lots of court.
Yeah, with no potential for expansion, so.
Right.
And, and I'm just getting at, you know, it, it, just strongly opposed to putting any more pavement down than what's absolutely necessary relative to establishing safe access, you know?
Thank you for your opinion, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Do we want to, um, vote things like the standard roadway bounds, property line radii? Do we wanna vote for these tonight, or should we hold off until later?
I think we should hold off until Larry has said it all. We've gotta go through his.
And then the, then the. The only thing is, if some of these aren't allowed, they'll need to redesign the plan.
Well, you can wait until Larry, we go through it and, and then change it.
So then we have an important item to deal with.
Sorry, I, I didn't understand.
Important item is the, is the surety.
The deadline. No, the, the deadline, the deadline is that we have to act on this by, uh, October twenty-fifth as it's presently, um, set up.
Oh, really, twenty-fifth, well.
So we need to have you consider an extension request that we have to execute.
Yeah, we have to go to the next one, right.
Yeah.
Need a form H.
Do we want them backed on the ninth, or do we want them back on the twenty-third? Twenty-third would only lend us, yeah.
Two days.
Two days.
Well, we'll do a form H, um, I'll take a motion for a form H, um, extension of time to December thirtieth. That's the standard time, right?
Yeah, December thirty-first.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
I'd like to make a motion to extend, um, one ninety-six West Main Street to December thirtieth.
No, 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 uh, an extension of time for decision, a form, form H, is that what we call it?
Yes, that's right, yeah.
A form H, extension of time.
An extension of time for the decision to be made.
To be made on one ninety-six West Main Street to December thirtieth.
Motion.
I second.
Motion's been made to extend the, the extension of time for decisions to one ninety-six West Main Street to December thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Do you have a form H?
I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna get one, I'll, I'll do that.
Do that before we leave.
When do we, if we want to and wanna close this, you know, continue the hearing? If we wanna do it at this point, take a break and I'm gonna, um.
I'd really like to vote these waivers personally, is there no support for that?
We should wait for, for Bob to be here.
Wait for Bob to be here. Wait for Bob to begin, I understand, that's a good move, that's a good point. Has Bob missed two of these?
No.
Just this one, just tonight?
Probably he only allowed to miss two.
He only allowed to miss one.
Really? Throughout the whole year, wow.
So-
Yeah, I thought he missed one of these.
Guess it's a special permit, too.
Yes, I, I thought, I thought he missed one, yeah, yeah. But, um, I guess we could keep in track of that stuff.
Yeah.
I'll take your word for it.
So what we could do right now, if we want, you can-
A motion to continue?
Yeah, continue, and if we take a recess, I'll get downstairs and-
Take care of all that paperwork.
Um, chat.
Yeah, um, at this point, I'll make a mo- John, when would you recommend that we continue this, so what's, uh, what's everything looking like?
Well, we could put it on for the ninth, but-
Twenty-third's probably better.
Twenty-third, they're, they're requ- requesting the twenty-third.
The twenty-third of September?
Uh, October.
Of October? What's the twenty-third looking like?
We could-
Oh, we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
October twenty-third, didn't we just extend one of them to the twenty-third?
Uh, we did.
So it'll be-
Five fifty-four.
Five fifty-four and, and sixty-nine West Main, I'll accept a motion.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue one ninety-six West Main Street to October twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
Is there a second for that?
I second.
Seconded by Joanne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that meeting also open to everybody?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely, sure, of course.
More than ever.
Until we close the hea- when we say we close it, and-
Okay.
Yeah, um, motion for a five-minute break, let John do some paperwork, and then we can finish up any, any remaining stuff.
Motion for a five-minute break.
Oh, yeah, all in favor, all opposed?
Yes, have it.
Hi, everybody, we're back, um, and at this point, um, what we're going to do is I'll be looking for a motion to authorize the vice chair to sign in place of the clerk tonight.
I make a motion for the vice chair to sign in place of the clerk tonight.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded to allow Tilly to sign for Bob, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. And so Tilly signed the Form H extension, and now we have-
What's the date, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-
The twenty-fifth. We're gonna hold off on signing the documents until after we-
Yes.
Talk to these nice folks.
Yes.
Folks, please come up, sorry for wait, uh, for the long wait. So this is By Faith Fellowship Church?
Yes.
And they're relocating from one West Main Street, right there on the corner?
Yes.
To, uh, the, the old VFW Hall, please introduce yourself for us.
Yes, Pastor Steve at By Faith Fellowship Church, it's my wife Denise Newman, and this is a, a board member.
I am Sue Loyco, and I live on Rockmont.
Small world, isn't it?
The other side, though.
Small world, oh, you must have seen the trees getting cut. Did you take any picture on? I'm on MacRitch. My understanding is, at this point, and, and just, John can probably summarize it better, but my understanding is this, you folks bought the property from the VFW?
Yes, sir.
Under normal conditions now, the VFW is now going to be a church?
The, the building is a church, but the VFW and the American Legion are still meeting in the basement, they have their own offices and they have their own meeting room. So, uh, the veterans are still a big part of what goes on there, but it is a church, upstairs is a church, downstairs is really like nothing right now, we haven't done anything with the downstairs. And in the back there, they have a full meeting room, ra- rather large, and they have their offices, and it's no longer just the VFW, but the American Legion is also part of it also.
So the VFW is, is still there?
Yes, sir.
Like an additional use?
Yes, I guess you could-
This is the ch- and the reason these folks are here, my understanding is the building inspector, query John, asked him, would this, even though under strict interpretation of the bylaw, this added use would trigger a site plan review? They are, they're asking, I believe, if I'm not mistaken-
Yes, sir.
Asking if this use is something that, in this one particular case, if the board would waive site plan review in this particular circumstance, and I don't know the paperwork you'd do, or how you would actually do, handle the paperwork if this board so chose to do that, but I'm sure you'd be able to handle it, right?
Yeah, no, right, by action of the board, you know, agreeing to waiving the site plan, I'd be allowed to sign off on the building permit. And the, the only reason, they're not adding to the building, they're not increasing the need for parking. I'm sure they're gonna work it out amongst themselves when, you know, the VFW, American Legion has a big to-do, you know, it's not gonna allow you to have mass at the same time, I would imagine.
Right, yeah, we have a, a, a schedule that allows us to coexist with them, so-
So, just, just so clear, who owns the parcel that we're talking about here?
Okay, um, what it is, is our church, By Faith Fellowship Church, we have two members that bought the church, so they own it privately.
So they own, if I, if I were to go with the registry of deeds right now?
Yes.
There's a certain map and lot number for that whole lot?
Yes, and they gave the church an exclusive lease, but, uh, as part of our lease, we told them that it has to include the veterans, and they were fully with that, they were fully with that.
So they wanna be displaced.
Yeah. And, uh, I, I did note that, uh, well, we, we submitted a letter to the board, uh, but I did note that there was concern about the tank, and so I just wanted to address that.
Oh, everybody wants to know about the tank.
I do wanna address that.
It's all about the tank.
We, we totally plan on keeping the tank, uh, the VFW plans on keeping the tank, we know that it's iconic in the town, and, you know, and also, uh, it's a good tribute to our veterans, so, uh, we have no, no problem with keeping the tank.
So the tank stays right there?
The tank stays right where it is.
Unless you wanna move it.
Yeah.
Uh, but you don't own the tank?
No, the VFW's still owns the tank, yes.
You're allowing them, or the, the folks that, the owner, the new owners of the property land?
It's actually leased in, like, it's in the lease.
So all, all of this whole agreement is in?
It's all in writing, and, yes.
Is it one lease or separate leases for you and separate leases for the VFW?
Uh, what it is, it's a lease for the church, and then it's a side agreement that has been signed that says that, that as long as By Faith, our church, uh, has that exclusive lease, that our veterans have a place to meet on.
Okay.
Do you think, do you think a letter to explain all that, so that you can put it on their date or something, so that there won't be any issues with questioning it?
Well, it wouldn't be on a deed, though.
It's actually a private matter. You know, it's just a matter of this board being aware of this proposed change of use, and the real question is, rather than going through the expense of a, us preparing a site plan, that their use isn't going to create an adverse impact on the property. So, if it ever did in the future become an issue with parking, and people parking within the right-of-way, you know, the town would have to deal with that, if, if that was the case.
Well, is the building inspector giving him something to, to-
He's, the building inspector, yeah, he, yeah, he has to give them an occupancy permit, and he needs department heads to sign off on this. And the one particular instance where he needs, um, a waiver, so that I can sign off on the, on the building permit, is by the board being aware, and the board agreeing or not to the terms. And the term is, does this board wanna take the action this evening, you can formally vote on this to waive site plan?
Yeah, I'm thinking about something written, so that the building inspector can put it in the file, or they can get a copy attached to their occupancy permit.
Yeah.
Something-
Do you have any other questions?
In case any questions come up-
Okay.
In the future.
Do you have any other questions?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you have any other questions?
No, that, that's, I'm happy the tank is staying.
Yes, yes, the tank is staying. The tank is staying.
Any questions?
Um, no.
I, I guess my, my question would be, what are you proposing to do inside, you're just, you're gonna put pews in and make it into a church, is that the intention?
Uh, not, there, there's a couple of pews sitting in there, but it's, uh, chairs, it's mostly chairs and an altar, we're just planning on holding all things pertaining, pertaining to church, worship service, uh, church service.
You're not really gonna be renovating, then?
No, no renovating and no changing the, the specs of the parking, everything staying the same, but except for, you know, paint and, and make it look nice.
Do you have to, is it handicap accessible? I can't remember.
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It is.
Bathroom and ramp.
Yeah.
Good, that sounds great.
I'll accept a motion to authorize the town planner to sign off on the, um, certificate of occupancy- for-
For thirty-five.
Thirty-five Andover Street. Is there anybody who wants to make that motion?
I make a motion for the building-
For, your plan for the town planner?
For the town planner.
You can just say "so moved."
So moved.
I always do that.
A second. Okay, there's a second, so, motion on the floor is to authorize the town planner to sign off on the building inspector's sign-off sheet, to authorize-
Occupancy.
occupancy permit. You got this, or?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, occupancy permit for, uh, for four thirty-five Andover Street. Uh, any discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Be well, God bless.
Thank you, guys, God bless.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, I really do.
I said, dude, you might hear them at seven-thirty, but, you know.
I am so, so-
No, that was an important matter, that was an important matter.
Need help, though.
Thank you, guys.
Not only that, it's, it's free admission, it's pretty good entertainment.
It's a good learning experience.
Worked every penny.
It's reality, reality.
Okay, back to business, um, in front of me, John has given us a, um, a clean copy of the fifty-five, sixty-five Central Street, certificate of vote for special permit and site plan approval with conditions, and, um, at this point-
Oh, I should sign off on it, all right, okay.
I'll accept a motion, yeah, we've, we've closed this hearing, right, and we're in business now, and we've voted a decision. So I'll accept a motion to, um, grant the permit and sign the certificate of vote for fifty-five, sixty-five Central Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, um-
Sign the certificate of vote.
Sign the certificate of vote and grant the approval for fifty-five to sixty-five Central Street.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
I think Tilly, Tilly had just-
Oh, come on, I got that one.
Well, maybe 'cause I'm closer, the sound travel. Motion has been made by Bruce, seconded by Tilly, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously, which was very important, a four to zero with one absence vote, special permit, if anybody said no, I'd have to rip this up. That's how it works with those special permits.
Just one page?
Uh, is it one or two, John? Is it one signature page or two?
The signatures on that are two pages, the, the front and the last.
The last, okay.
Yep.
Easy, buddy, easy, I have plenty on you, come on. God, so those are the my laws for Central Street, yes?
Second-to-last page.
Yes. Okay. And, um, we're gonna make it simple, I do have a whole, full set there, but, um, we have one, one to sign.
John, while, while we're, while we're fixing our signatures to these, could, um, we'll figure those all out, um, could you give us an update on where we are with the MS four? It kinda triggered my, well, the thirty-second synopsis, where are we with that, anyway?
We are trying to finish it up.
Trying to finish what up, what, what are we doing?
Close the business.
Is this the annual report for nineteen, or is this?
This is, um, the new report, we already, we're up to date, believe it or not, we're up to date with, um, being certified for every year, including this year.
Oh, really?
This year is the new permit, and the new permit is, um, looking out two and four years, where a lot of progress has to be established relative to this one.
This one?
Yes. And then if, if we could just sign that.
Just one signature?
Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, it's only one site plan, really, that shows the difference. Uh, and then if we could just have Boyd sign, um, this front page of this, this'll be the, um, the full set. So, um-
So this is basically our, our action plan?
The MS four.
The MS four.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's the, it's the actual program, so we're applying for, uh, the, the permit itself, and it's a five-year permit, and you have to make a tremendous amount of progress and document it, and get everybody on board with this thing over the next two years.
It's only one signature.
And then by year four, we have to be fully implemented.
Only one to be drawn on this one?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll date them. Um, so, Harry, that's where we are, you know, most of the stuff, most of this stuff we've been practicing, you know, for years, we've been practicing, best managers been practicing.
I was just wondering where, where, where we're going, what that, what's, uh, so what do we do to have that sent in, is that, um?
We're, we're, it's electronic filing.
Okay.
And, uh, we're really shooting for Monday, as we close the business, to submit it.
Is that the deadline?
We, we're getting everything filled out, Pete Dirk, he's really been helping out a lot, and, um, you know, we're, we're online a lot, we're working with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, their, their new environmental-
Did Joe Klosbrov leave?
Uh, yeah, yeah, and Jennifer is over there now.
You?
Yeah, yeah, so she's helping out, too, she's working with us as a regional effort to get every town within the region up to speed with their MS four.
Normal, normal.
Do, you know, a lot of towns, and I've, I've pressed this upon, um, my fellow and everybody in town, a lot of towns farm this out, you know, at a substantial cost to do it. And, um, you know, we're doing this in-house, so, you know, we are trying to save the town a substantial amount of money. Now, the problem is, over the next few years, um, there's a substantial amount of money involved with implementing the plan.
The tasks that we need to take over the next four years?
Yeah, and a lot of that falls on Peter, you know, and, and whatever staff he can work with to help him out, and, you know, Juan and Andrea, you know, we've been doing a lot of bulk of it, and we've been working with, uh, Peter. And, uh, seriously, just trying to-
It involves the border health, because I heard the, I heard that there were water quality testing that used to be done, part of the, the new mandate?
Yeah, but they, they're giving, this, this permit gives you a couple of years to get things in place, you know, so there's stuff to do next year, there's stuff to do to year two, three, and four.
Could just CC us on that when you send, uh, CCB, I don't know if you guys want the extra email, but I'd really love to see that, once it's, once it's put in, that would be great.
I do, too.
I appreciate that, that's great.
We're doing everything we can to do it on time, and if we don't, we're gonna ask for an extension.
You'll get it, you'll get it.
Yeah.
You get it.
Uh, again, we, we have all of the other permits, because there was a void, you know, none of this has been done.
Caught up to twenty nineteen, right?
Yeah, yeah, so-
For the annual report.
So this year, you know, through basically Andrea's work, you know, and, and working with Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, uh, working with Peter, we've been able to, um, fill in all of those blank years.
All the empty years.
And now we're on the EPA site, Georgetown, as being up to date.
Which is good.
We weren't since two thousand and nine. We weren't since two thousand nine.
Oh, yeah, we felt way behind, yeah. I think everybody thought it was gonna go away.
Yeah, and then and then this year we did the regulations that we needed to for erosion settlement control. So those are in place. That was a big part of it. You know, now now the SWIP has to be on our website in. Yeah, and we're working on that. We're working on the final language of that. That has to be posted.
That's the state, right?
Yeah, but it's all EPA driven.
Yeah, it's copy paste.
We're phase two.
Copy paste.
MS four. We're MS four even though we don't have sewage.
Oh, but we discharge to the ponds.
That's right, right. But we don't we don't discharge. We don't have any inflow and infiltration problems. Based on sewer discharge, municipal sewer uh discharging into drain system.
Oh, it's all street runoff.
Yeah, you go into the large urban centers, you know, and it's a combined sewer water. Discharge issue that they've been cleaning up for years and years. You know, you know, just to give you an example, Nashua has been heavily involved with this and they had to put in massive. Um holding tank system and talking millions of dollars to hold back their inflow and infiltration. It used to go directly into the Merrimack River during flooding conditions along with all the yeah. But that that's with all these large cities that border the Merrimack River.
Use what you have.
Combined flow.
Yeah, now that, you know, and this is the whole thing with uh the the Clean Water Act that was implemented or adopted in nineteen seventy. So this is the final phase is getting the point source pollutants out of streams and other waterways and and ponds and everything else. You know, just clean up the environment once and for all, get all these points of.
Remember that with with uh we were in Groveland and they had a uh a laundromat down down at the center. I think they still might have it there. It was pumping right to the Merrimack. Everything.
Soap and dirt.
Well, we all we all remember the the nickname for the Merrimack used to be the Sticks.
Sticks, yeah.
You know, and it's not like that anymore. You know, it's gone. It's come a long way. It still has a ways to go.
Still gets the overflow from Lawrence. Rain season.
You you know, in a lot of towns, you know, in the urban core, um one twenty eight and. For for the last thirty years, the the implementation of improvement was for every gallon you put in. The sewage into the system, you had to take ten out. So you you know, in my hometown, I was the planning director for a week, you know, for years, we were taking millions of gallons out. But every year, sewage was flowing into Hong Pond, which was the aquifer for. You know, so with the millions of gallons that have been taken out of the system, I mean, we were identifying two million gallon inflows. Three million gallons here, you know, rooftops, parking lots, everything, you know, it it's a massive undertaking. But thirty years later, there's no more um overflow.
We were gonna put that in our our subdivision regs. We have to do that yet, right?
Well, speaking of subdivision regs, um what about courts and lanes?
That's on for the next agenda. That that is on for the next agenda along with the um the other item.
Uh inclusionary housing?
Yes.
Now, are those public hearings or are we putting that in the agenda so that we can?
This is as as we discussed, as we as we discussed. And as we handled erosion and stormwater regs. We formed an ad hoc committee. Okay, just to focus in on on coming up with the amendments and working on those for, you know, I think that was quite a few months that we worked on those. When we when we agreed to the final document, you know, what we were going to put forward for town meeting.
When the subcommittee had.
Right.
A deliverable product to deliver to this board, to this board. Then it came forward.
Now, we don't do that with we don't do that with subdivision regulations, but we have to do that with zoning. And and so what I'm getting at is for next week on those two issues, this is what I'm suggesting. And I know it differs from what you've put forward.
I like to move things forward.
But we would, as we we spoke, we would have to advertise twice. Because I don't really think you can get away with a general advertisement. When the fact of the matter is you're going to get to specific zoning amendments. And specific zoning amendment changes have to be properly advertised. So um when we get through with this, we we don't know what they are now and we need an.
You're talking about for the uh for the inclusionary housing. To make those changes, but there would be multiple changes in it and.
We need we we need that document to reference in a public hearing notice. Okay, hey, Joe Q. Public, you can come to the office and see what the proposed changes are. We don't know what those are, so you form an ad hoc.
Right, oh, okay, but we wouldn't actually have to put each and every one of those changes in a public notice. We can reference them.
Right.
To a document, yeah. I I understand.
And in this in this day and age, you put the whole document on our webpage as part of the advertisement too.
So step one, if I'm not misunderstanding what you're saying. Step one for um the inclusionary housing. As well as uh the courts and lanes, which is just under our regulation, not only the town meeting, but only to this board. Step one is to form subcommittees for those two. Um is there any reason we couldn't do that tonight?
Um. We, I mean, we could, but it's not on, it's not.
It's not officially on the agenda. So we'll wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, we can do that. Again, there there is no rush. Um you know, the the special town meeting is coming and going.
Oh, no, it's it doesn't. The warrant's closed. Yeah, I mean, we're no, there was never any.
No.
Thought that we'd ever make something like that. No, this is all for next spring.
Yeah, and we'll.
It might take us that long to get it done.
Right.
Who's kidding who? Took us how long? It was three months before we had a document that, and I mean. Well, those were from scratch too. These are these are modifications, but.
But this is a reasonable goal to get these two issues squared away, you know.
And the with the inclusionary housing, um I almost wanna say that might take a little bit longer. Than the courts and lanes, only because the courts and lanes is essentially planning board. Um and inclusionary housing, I would certainly hope that any subcommittee that we created would naturally have mem- members from our board. But would also have members from the Affordable Housing Trust as well.
Yeah, they have to be involved.
They know they're not involved.
Yeah, we don't really, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they they're they know the weeds. So, okay, so next week on next week's agenda, uh not next week, but our next.
Two weeks.
October night or something.
I I really wouldn't suggest that we try to conduct this type of business. That we need to conduct a regular planning board meetings because I just don't see any real let up. On what we need to accomplish at regular at regular meetings.
So you wanna have an extra one?
Uh no, you know what? I would I would suggest if if we can, it depends on who wants to be on the committee. If it's the whole board, that's fine too, but um I'd rather have it as early in the day and preferably Monday. Monday is the only day I have available. Um Tuesdays bike committee and Thursdays I'm at Merrimack Valley. Couple of nights a month, so Monday is the only thing I have open um to deal with. And if we wanted to, I don't know if anybody's available in the afternoon or five or six, or if we have to meet at seven, that's fine.
Well, put the let's next and put it on the agenda for the next time. We'll form a couple of subcommittees and um then we can begin. Begin the long.
It's not like we're doing the master plan over or anything like that, so it's not, you know, long, it years in the making. It's it will be able to knock it off, especially the courts and lands. I think we'll be able to knock it off on a couple of meetings. Um the inclusionary housing, I don't know how in depth we wanna go. But I think what we really need to accomplish with the inclusionary housing is how we're actually gonna handle it from now on. On a per project basis.
How we get the money or the housing or whatever.
And I think we need to. If we if we can bring an expert in to consult about, you know, what we should be doing. You know, we're not we're not dealing with big projects like some of these, you know, bigger communities are dealing with. Um but just in case we are, how do we wanna handle it? Um you know, we don't wanna set some crazy precedent by keep on, you know, by keeping uh by improve approving projects as we have been. And really not getting anywhere relative to producing housing.
Right, cuz if we keep getting money, then we have to do something with that money to purchase.
And and the thing is, you need a lot of money to build anything that's going to substantially. Add to, you know, your affordable housing stock. You know, and and what you have to realize too is that, yeah, you have one big project in town, forty B project, but. In all likelihood, you you're always gonna be dealing with small. Units of housing, which equals small amounts of money, which doesn't, you know.
At least with the CBS, we'll get a good chunk of money with that, so that'd be good.
Well, absolutely, four hundred and fifty seven, I mean, and the trick is for the for the trust to turn around.
This one that we just signed. I would have liked the decision to say to be put as put aside. For purchasing a unit.
And and the thing is. Yeah, affordable housing, it it you know, it it's it sounds great and it and it's a real good goal to produce and everything else. Um it's it's very challenging um for many reasons. Um relative to those people that occupy, you know, and they say they buy that affordable unit and then they're restricted. To how much they can sell it for when they decide to sell it. They're getting a great deal, but.
It has to stay as affordable housing.
Well, the idea is that if it gets sold, the next person that needs the the affordable unit can buy it.
Right, so that it stays.
That's the idea. It is a good thing.
It is, yeah.
See, it 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 what happens is if you, the person that lives there, right? And you've lived there for a real long period of time and you don't move on from that situation. When you go to sell it. All your friends are selling houses that have doubled in value. You know, tripled in value. You're not going to, as that property owner of an affordable unit, you're not gonna be able to participate. You've been participating in that you got a good deal at the beginning. But that good deal is going to keep you from realizing what you could realize in the real market. You know, I'm just, who knows what's gonna happen in the future.
That's true, but it's the the benefit outweighs.
But we were. But I I I had to deal with this a couple of times in my career where, you know, people were adamant that they're they're not selling it for that price.
Well, they should just make them sign something.
There's a deed rider. There's a deed rider that runs with.
So you signed it, you know?
You know, they got a lawyer and everything and say, hey, you know, it is what it is. It is a deed restriction, you know, and this board does not have the right to waive that because by waiving it. We have no authority to waive.
It's a federal regulation.
No, you can't waive something like that.
You can't.
It'll get off the list.
Just cuz it's been waived in the past.
So that's. It's just a lot to understand with it.
And and there's a lot to deal with. Um did we hit everything? We hit everything except the correspondence.
Did we do Palmer Lane already?
Palmer Lane, Palmer Lane.
We have to do this.
We did. We actually did.
We we did that at the beginning of, no, 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 no.
Palmer Lane? Did we miss that? Azbute Plan.
I can't remember from the beginning of the meeting.
We did, no, we did Stone Rock. That's right, we did Stone Rock. So walk us through this. Uh this is, oh, the basically what we're doing is we're asking um. Asking the selectmen and we're recommending this.
Yeah, we're recommending uh to the selectmen to, and it's in the motion. Um to forward Palmer Lane in the form of a warrant article for the special town meeting. For street acceptance.
Gotcha, okay.
Oh, it's too late. We closed the warrant last night.
No, they didn't. This this has a placeholder.
Oh, they have a placeholder for it. Oh, okay.
And the effect is, we already approved the Azbute Plan. The Azbute Plan is the reference plan um for the street acceptance. And um the deed for the right of way in utilities uh can be acquired. Prior to or within a hundred and twenty days after the vote of town meeting. And um that that deed utility has already been recorded. Um you you know, it's already in place. They've already. Put it in place for the town to receive it when the street is accepted as a public way.
So all the boxes have been checked?
Yep, and I and I did consult with town council. And um they're all ready to go. We we did put the placemat in.
In the place placeholders, yeah.
But there's no fall town meeting, so this will just be on the spring.
No, there is a fall town meeting.
October twenty eighth, Monday.
When?
October twenty eighth, Monday.
Oh, okay.
You know how I know that so definitively? Cuz I'm going to Disney World on the twenty ninth.
Put your trip off today.
You know, after all this work is done, I gotta go to Disney World.
I'm gonna ask you after the meeting. John, now that the meeting's over, what are you gonna do?
Can uh can I hear a motion for the the draft motion there?
I move for the planning board to recommend to the board of selectmen the following that Palmer Lane be considered for public street acceptance. And for an article to this effect be prepared for the uh October twenty eighth town, two thousand nineteen town meeting warrant.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Are we ready to adjourn?
All in favor, all opposed? The ayes have it?
Now I make a motion to adjourn.
We do, we not wanna deal with the uh everybody. I assume that means we're we've all been good with the uh the correspondence. There were only two things of correspondence there. And neither of really that.
Did you get the decision for the zoning board for uh the restaurant? The restaurant? Done that to me?
I will, yeah.
See, see me on that?
Did I, did you already ask me that? Or no? No, I I got it. It's on my desk. I'll uh scan it and send it to everybody.
Motion to, I heard I heard a motion to adjourn. And all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. Good night, everybody.